It is 8 o'clock. We do have a quorum. We've got a busy agenda. So I am going to call the meeting to order and we'll start with a roll call. So Suzanne, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll, I would appreciate it.
I will be happy to. Patrick Brown. Kim Gleason. Tammy Colby.
Here.
Lyle Jepson.
Present.
Tom Lovett.
Here.
Gabrielle Lucci. Jenna O'Farrell.
Here.
Oliver Olson.
Present.
Angelita Penya.
Here.
Jennifer Samuelson.
Here.
Daniel French.
Yeah, hi Suzanne and Gabrielle, I think came on, but Mr. Mute Button, so if you want us, I'm here. Gabrielle was here, I think, as well.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm here.
Excellent. So hopefully, our other two board members will be joining us soon. So with that, we'll entertain some amendments to the agenda. I do have one. I'd like to have a brief discussion of a situation with the Rutland City School Board. So perhaps we can, perhaps we can take that up just before the break at 10 o'clock, so after Agenda Item K. Absent objection, I'd like to take that up. All righty, are there any other amendments to the agenda?
I'm in favor of that amendment, thank you.
Excellent. Okay. With that, we will now turn to public to be heard. I understand that there's at least one member of the public who wishes to be heard. Mr. Northrup will come to you in a moment. Are there any other members of the public who wish to be heard? Okay, not hearing any. Mr. Northrup, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself for the record and the floor is yours. You're still on mute. Randall Northrup, I know you had expressed an interest to offer comment to the board. We can see you, but we can't hear you. Well, we're not quite at the 8:05 mark, so we'll, oh, Mr. Northrup, are you with us? We still don't hear you. Are there any other, I saw someone else just joined. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Is there a way to mute so I don't inadvertently talk during, sorry, this is Carol Dawes. I'm the Berry City Clerk and Treasurer.
Oh, wonderful, yeah. If Suzanne, I can't remember, what's, if you're dialed in, I know that's, is it star six?
I believe so.
Okay, great. I will mute after introducing myself and I'm here interested in hearing the testimony and discussion around the Central Vermont Career Center and might be interested in participating in the discussion.
Okay, normally, we ask members of the public to offer comment during this designated time, but given the subject matter and your sort of role as the clerk, I'll permit your your comment during that time if needed. So just remember, I believe star six mutes and also unmutes. So when we get to that time, hopefully that works. But for some reason, if you can't join us, feel free to dial back in.
Great, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And I think Mr. Northrup just logged off. Perhaps he'll log back on. In the meantime, I see that Patrick and Kim have just joined. Thank you.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. So we're at time for public comment. We did have a member of the public, Mr. Northrup, who'd expressed interest in addressing the board. We saw he was dialed in, but he may be having technical difficulties because we could not hear him. So we'll, we'll wait a moment here to see if he rejoins. And perhaps we'll revisit Item B, but in the interest of efficiency, I think we can dispose of Item C. So we'll, we'll, we'll move to Item C for the moment and return to B to see if anyone has, has joined us who wishes to address the board. So on Item C, which is to review and approve the minutes of November 17th, someone cared to offer a motion. Tom, thank you. So we have a motion from Tom Lovett to approve the minutes of the November 17th, 2021 meeting. Is there a second? I think, Kim, you're seconding, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded, excuse me, seconded by Kim Gleason. Is there any discussion? All righty, not hearing any. All those in favor of adopting the minutes of November 17th, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and those opposed, please say no and raise your hand. Are there any abstentions? Good. The motion appears to pass unanimously. The motion does pass unanimously and you've adopted the minutes of November 17th. So I will now return to Item B, public to be heard, to see if we've had any members of the public join us or if they're, if Mr. Northrup has rejoined. Okay, not seeing anybody. Again, I'll, I'll continue on to board announcements, but we'll return to Item B periodically until we get to 8:20, just in case any members of the public do join us during that time and we can take public comment then. As far as board announcements go, the Chair does have one. I did reach out per our last meeting. I did reach out to the Chair of the Standards Board, but I've but have not been able to connect yet. So I'm gonna do some follow up on that front. So that's, we anticipated possibly having some, a continuation of the discussion we started at our last meeting after I had the opportunity to speak with the Chair of the Standards Board, but we've not been able to connect yet. So that's why we don't have that on this month's agenda. But I'll continue to pursue that and hopefully we can take that up at a future meeting. Are there any other board announcements? Quite a quiet group this morning. And I didn't see any members of the, of the public join us. So with that, we'll move on to Item E, which is the student report. So Angelita and Gabrielle, if you wouldn't mind providing us your update, that would be wonderful.
Thank you. I can go first, unless Gabrielle has something she'd like to say first. So this month, for my school specifically, it has been quite a month. We definitely saw a rise in behavioral issues, or at least it hit a tipping point. We had a group of students who decided to bring in flags to school and it caused a really big disturbance. And at the end of the day, it resulted in flags being banned from the school or revoked for the time being. And then some students made comments about bringing guns as their Second Amendment to school. And that caused quite a stir, especially just among all the students. And only 20 high schoolers came to school the next day. There was a great disturbance and teachers were definitely stressed out, especially with everything that's already been going on. And students this year, it's just been very all over the place, I think. Especially at Bristol, we saw a lot of behavioral issues with students that had behavioral issues to start with, and then they were gone for a year and didn't receive any of the support they needed coming back to school and not really knowing how to function in an environment, especially with younger kids. I work for after-school programs for elementary kids. And knowing some of these kids from the past and then seeing them again and working with them and seeing that they're not really, I understand, I was on a committee for a little bit where we were talking about kids with special needs and how a lot of kids kind of went unnoticed and they weren't receiving the care they needed. And that's definitely showing, definitely showing with some of the students that I work with and that I know receive some sort of support at schools. And COVID really did them dirty last year and this year especially. So I, I don't remember where that ended, but I think that the thing that happened last week definitely shows that maybe this year, we need to give them a little bit more support and especially teachers. I feel like I'm repeating myself since, for the past few months in these meetings, but it, it's just a very reoccurring thing and a very reoccurring image. There's just a lot of stress for everyone and teachers are definitely kind of stressing out. They can't afford to take a break off like students can. We've already had two teachers take long-term leave for mental health care. They just needed a break and they have not been getting that. And they have especially received seventh graders and eighth graders that they didn't receive the right transition from sixth grade to seventh grade, which is when we, my high school specifically transitions. And I can imagine what schools that are lower income than us are experiencing as well. It's just been a very stressful year for a lot of students. And I think teachers are probably getting hit the hardest. So it's not really a big update, but I just, yeah, that's all I have for you guys.
And that, thanks for sharing your perspective as a, as a student and how you're seeing this from a student perspective. I assume everybody in the board has, has read in the media some of the accounts of what's transpired recently at Angelita's school. That's, it's, it's, it's very concerning. Gabrielle.
All right, so for this month, it's, it's definitely been a stressful month for a lot of people in my school community. We've had some disagreements over certain topics with parents and teachers at different meetings across the community. And we've still experienced a lot of behavioral issues with our students. There were, there were some disturbance disturbances in my school specifically about threats to the school's safety that, and there were rumors that were floating around social media. They diffused the rumors, but then they seemed to spring back up again very recently. But the administration of the school and the police department have looked into it and seen no discernible threats. So they handled that. But it's definitely a little scary to think about because, you know, you never, you never really want to think about a potential threat to your safety when you go to school. So even, even just the thought of it is a little scary. So I think that the upcoming holiday break is definitely going to be a great time for stressed students to rest and recharge and hopefully come back in the new year to maybe a more peaceful environment. So that's all I have for today.
Okay, thank you. Angelita.
I would all, oh, sorry. And yeah, Gabrielle, we've definitely seen that at our school as well. And I can 100% say that this year has been the year with the most clear the halls we have ever had. There was one week where we had three in a week. We were, we had two in one day and then we had another the next day. And it ranges from fights in the hallway to mental breakdowns. That has been happening. We had, we had one month ago, kid have, you know, it was having a rough time and we've had some students like that, which I haven't heard of happening before. It's typically for medical reasons, but this has been the year where clear the halls have happened the most, aside from medical issues. So get some perspective of what's going on in some of these schools.
Questions for Angelita or Gabrielle? Kim, was that your hand up?
It was, and it's certainly not a fair question for Angelita and Gabrielle, but you are right, we are hearing it and we hear you. And I'm just wondering what, if anything, you can imagine that we might be able to do to either highlight this. I think if you have anyone in schools, you probably realize, or you have any connection to schools, you probably realize these challenges, but your sharing of these stories are really impactful. I just, I don't know if you have any thoughts about we, as we as a body, are able to help support changing this reality, honestly. Not fair to ask, I'm sorry.
I know. I wish I had an answer, but personally, I believe this isn't a change that needs to happen on the state level. It needs to happen on the national level. You know, I can't come to you guys and ask for lesser hours in the days or to move the school day back a little or less homework or change national testing and standardized testing. Because I think that way of learning is honestly very unfair for a lot of students. Sitting for eight hours, staring at textbooks and listening to teachers is not the way to learn. And it's very stressful, especially as someone that battles with mental health. I struggle, I've recently, I've been struggling with short-term memory. And memory is purely what our school system is based on. And I know a lot of students like me and especially kids that struggle from learning disabilities, that it's, it's not an easy thing. So this isn't something I can come, I wish I could, I wish we could make a bigger change. But I look at this as more of a platform. You know, there's some powerful people on this board and there's some powerful people that work for districts and hopefully just getting the word out to people saying, this, this isn't working for a lot of students. It's working for some and I hope we can find a way to keep that for the students that we have. But I don't think there's equity for a lot of students. We're not giving enough supports for the people that are struggling and cutting back on supports for kids that are not. So I don't really know how to answer that. I, that's like, I hope I answered your question a little bit at least, but that's the best answer I have.
I think.
Probably a better, better answer than most of the, the, the adults can offer. So we appreciate that. Tom and then Patrick.
Yes, thank you. And this isn't so much a question as a comment, and maybe it's a question for Dan. But I just read this morning that more schools are closed right now from threats of violence than they are from COVID in the country. And so your comments do resonate on a national level and it is, Vermont's not immune. And I coach a third and fourth grade basketball team where I've seen the kind of behavioral issues that you, you mentioned. And as a matter of fact, the supports that are available in the system right now or in the school system are not adequate for the boys like, one of the boys I had on my team. And so I'm wondering, Mr. Secretary, if there is coordination with some other agencies around the mental health of students, not just the learning loss, but the mental health of students, especially younger students, that it can be a statewide effort, a coordinated effort, like we are trying to do around learning. I wonder if the same kind of effort can be done around mental health.
Yeah, certainly. And that's, that's a cornerstone of our recovery planning. Honestly, it's been hard to move forward in that area with the Delta surge. So much of our effort, I think appropriately, has been on ensuring we can keep kids in school. And that's job number one right now, because that's the beginning of starting to address some of these needs. But we do have additional federal resources and state resources poised to bring to bear. We're hoping to start making that transition after the, about mid-January, after the 5 through 11 vaccination really starts to make an impact on school operations.
So with that, Patrick, then Tammy, then Jenna, then Lyle, and then we're gonna return back to Item B and see if we picked up any members of the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to echo what Angelita said. And this needs to be, what we're seeing in our local schools is a microcosm of what's happening across our country. And we need to partner, it's a partnership between the parents, the teachers, the administration, and indeed, the community, so that we can, the best way to do this is to partner and to be as proactive as best as possible. So we're not going to be addressing these issues when they reach crisis proportions. Sometimes it's not always possible, but we can only do our best and be alert and, you know, and include the students because they are heirs on the ground and they sometimes, even through social media, have an idea of what's coming up, what's happening. And to see how we can best address these issues when they arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Tammy, Jenna, Lyle.
Morning. First of all, Angelita and Gabrielle, I just want to say how much I appreciate you sharing your perspectives with us. You know, we hear about things in the news and through other channels, but having your words and your experiences is really helpful. And it makes me wonder whether or not it would be useful to be hearing from broader groups of students, parents, teachers. I think we're all talking about a system that's under stress in lots of different ways. And I think about the State Board's role and responsibilities to be sort of that forum for hearing more from the public. And so I wonder if that would be useful. I certainly find it useful and we're gonna have more, some presentations from Burlington today. But having that information and that real firsthand account helps me understand what the issues are and when, and sort of in my decision-making. And so I want to thank you both for taking the time to do, to help us understand. But I also, it just makes me wonder if as a group, as a board, there might be opportunities for us to be systematic over the next six to 12 months and having some listening sessions that are really open to the public where we can sort of develop a real rich and nuanced understanding of what the issues are. So I just thought, I, to me, that would be really useful. And again, I wanted to thank Angelita and Gabrielle for, for being so candid. And I know that's not always easy to do, but I just want to say how much I really appreciate that.
Thank, thank you, Tammy. And when we get to Agenda Item Q, if you would be so kind as to remind us of that, because I think that's really important that we, we pick that up. So Jenna, Lyle, and then Jennifer.
I just wanted to add, I think, I want to thank you both for sharing what you hear. And it must feel so frustrating, Angelita, when you said, I say the same things. Like, you know, who's listening? Who's, who is listening to me? I'm saying the same things to these adults and nothing's happening. And I just encourage you both not to kind of give up and keep working at your local level, because sometimes in your, you know, community level, level solutions are the faster community level problems. And creating change is hard, you know, serving as a change agent in your own communities. But you use your voice and mobilize who you have that are gonna work with you and know that you are surrounded by people that you can call on for support and to help move your efforts forward, because I think you have some momentum and strong voices. So I appreciate everything that you shared.
Great, thank you, Jenna. Lyle.
I want to say how impressed I am with your insights and thank you very much. And it must be hard for you to sit there and have us say, what would you do if you were us? And, but we appreciate that. And is it fair to say, I guess I have two questions, they're quick, I think. Is it fair to say that it feels to you like we've gone from COVID, everybody's at home and they've got this flexible scheduling thing going on, back to, and we're back to normal? And everything's gonna be the same now, although I appreciate why it's important to be back in school. So that's just maybe not a question, but a statement. But then I wonder if what I'm hearing from Angelita and from Gabriella is, is it a plea to consider and approve hybrid and alternative flexible scheduling so that everyone will be able to be successful? I think I'm hearing you say, it's almost too structured again and we may need to be more flexible. Am I hearing that, Angelita and Gabrielle?
Um, yes, because I worked well at home. Personally, when I was at home, I had all the resources in the world. You know, I went on Google, I was on YouTube. And of course, it's always great to go in school and ask those questions as well. But as an independent learner, I had more resources, more visual aids versus being in school, doing the work and then being too tired and unsure to kind of go out on my own, because I was worried I would find a not reliable resource. So personally, yes, some flexibility would be very nice. And I also just think this structure has been years in the making. It has not changed. And obviously, we have a lot more creativity in the world now. We have a lot more students that need very different structures to actually learn. And that is something that is not gonna change probably within the next 100 years. But, you know, it doesn't hurt to talk about it at least.
Gabrielle.
I definitely agree now that you're bringing this up. I think for a lot of students, hybrid is not really their cup of tea. It's very, it can be very confusing a lot of times to know, oh, what day do I go here? What day do I go there? But I definitely think that maybe it could be a good stepping stone. I myself work better in a fully remote environment. It's just the, the relaxed kind of environment. Like my home, my surroundings are personally better for how I need to learn, because sometimes the classroom can be a little distracting or a little stressful for me, at least. And I know that other students sometimes feel that way, so, excuse me. So I think that maybe that is a necessary step that we could have to take in the future to better the learning experience for all students.
Great. Thank you, Gabrielle. All righty, Jennifer and then Kim quickly, and then, because we do need to return to Item B.
Thanks. Well, just to, I mean, I think this has been a really rich discussion. And I was thinking, you know, how many of the adults in the room have not returned back to their normal pre-pandemic work schedules? You know, for instance, I often find that I have the luxury of being able to work at home when it suits me and then I go into work when I need to. So I, I could hear, you know, for the students that are, you know, sort of forced back into what was pre-pandemic normal, I can imagine that there might be some hiccups there. And, you know, my thought too is, you know, there's nothing like a crisis to point to opportunity. And I think the challenge for me is that we're all trying to do this in live time while we're trying to educate our students and keep them on track. So I can appreciate that that's, that's a big lift. So I can appreciate that that's that's a big lift. And the other thought that I had is I know last year we had our student members put together a survey, which I thought was really, really instructive. And I'm wondering if, Angelita and Gabrielle, if you might be interested in putting together a different survey that would be responsive to the issues that you're seeing this year. And so, you know, just a thought, if that's something that feels of interest to you. I think it would be really interesting for the board to capture all of those student voices. Thank you, guys, for being here and sharing your perspectives with us.
Thank you. Kim?
When, if that's something you guys want to do, I'm happy to support you in any way I can. So we can chat, you can let me know. But I was more also thinking, the law, Act 77, like, calls for this. I was trying to think, what can or should be done to accommodate a different structure? Because we have struggled with this idea of remote days counting as learning. But that seems to run against Act 77 flexible pathways that encourages that for our students. And are we identifying something that either needs additional legislative request to accommodate? Or is there something else that we might do that allows students to take full advantage of the flexible pathways that are afforded them in the law without finding teachers having to teach twice? Because I know that the hybrid was very difficult. And so I wonder if infrastructure money could be used to equip classrooms. So it's one teaching, but everybody's got the equipment for it to always be remote if that is a preferable method of learning for students. There has to be a solution. It feels like the law says there should be. And we've not actually exercised that. And when we did exercise it, it was in the face of a pandemic. And now we're trying to force things back to a normal that isn't real. So I hope that we can see or think critically about what might need to happen in there. And I don't know, Dan, if you have any thoughts on that.
Yeah, I would just, I mean, you mentioned a lot of aspects, but Act 77 is about individual personalized learning plans, still very much an option. The attendance requirement is a school-level attendance requirement. It's not about personalized learning. So, you know, schools have to have at least 50% of their students present to meet the minimal standard that's argued, put out in statute, not regulation. But PLPs are still very much in a landscape and can be used. You know, to your observation, it's kind of hard to advance some of these policies at the moment where schools are spending a bulk of their time managing the public health, safety of their students relative to COVID. But Act 77 is still very much in a landscape and something that can be leveraged on an individual basis.
Is there money for the infrastructure improvements that would allow teachers not to have to teach twice and students be able to choose their path?
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about that from a policy perspective. The infrastructure is not the issue. A lot of it comes down to district boundaries, you know, and residency and so forth. You know, not to not to throw a provocative idea on the table, but contemplating one school district, for example, where students had option and there was a, you know, we essentially have one major piece of infrastructure in the Vermont Virtual Learning Cooperative, which has been very successful and essentially was the backend of what a lot of schools provisioned last year as part of hybrid learning. They they had their own access to VTVLC. But what we run into is this ability of students to move across district boundaries and so forth, since we have so many small, small districts. But anyway, that's another topic, I suppose.
Yes, it is. So with that, I'm going to return to item B, public to be heard. And a final call, if there are any members of the public who've joined in the last few minutes and missed the earlier opportunity, we would welcome your comment at this time. All right, I'm not hearing anyone. So with that, we can now move on to item F. The independent, an update from the Independent School Rules Subcommittee. So Jennifer, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to provide the update on Rule Series 2200. And if Dawn is here, then I'll turn it over to you afterward for the update on Rule Series 7000. But with regard to Rule Series 2200, I think you guys all received in the agenda packet Oliver's November 29th letter, which I think pretty, gave a pretty clear review of where we are, how we got here, where we're going. So I, you know, won't spend too much time going over that. But in total, we received just over 80 comments from 10 sources. I was actually crunching some numbers last night. Three quarters of those comments landed in the last three days of the public comment period, which strikes me as a little bit unusual. I mean, it's not a good thing or a bad thing. It's just, there were a lot of comments that sort of came in at the last minute. And as a practical matter, we struggled a little bit as a subcommittee to figure out how best to process those comments, both because they were voluminous, but also many of the comments were very specific and went really right back to the work that had been done by the Act 173 Advisory Group. And we finally decided that the Act 173 Advisory Group was convened by the General Assembly in recognition of the fact that they were really sort of the experts in the room. And it felt appropriate for them to consider the public comments that really related to the work of their advisory group. And I had a conversation with Megan Roy, and she actually was appreciative to have this opportunity to revisit these issues. Because, as she explained, you know, they they put together language that they felt, you know, consensus language that reflected the intent. And as she reviewed some of the public comments, she realized that their intent was not adequately communicated. And so she thought it would be helpful for their, for her committee to really go back and revisit the language to better communicate the intent that they had achieved with their consensus language. So the Rule Series 2200 Subcommittee has met three times since the close of public comment. And, you know, we were literally going through in chronological order, comment by comment by comment, noting which comments pertain to the work of the Act 173 Advisory Group, and sort of putting those public comments in the parking lot for now, and then resolving those comments that don't deal with the work done by the Act 173 Advisory Group. So we're making some progress. We've got two more meetings scheduled before the end of the year. And then we'll schedule any additional meetings in January as necessary. But we feel confident that we're going to be able to get through our work prior to our board meeting in January. And the Act 173 Advisory Group also feels confident that it will be able to work through its work prior to our January board meeting. So I think we're all sort of online with the timeline that Oliver put forth. And I think what would make sense is to really put into a motion that we can approve that really memorializes the timeline and the process. But before I get to that, I'll pause and see if there are any questions.
Kim?
Not as much a question as a comment and a challenge that sort of reared its head through our process was related to the approval of, now that there's two categories of independent schools, those that can receive tuition, in, that came about through Act 173. We are faced with a situation that we may have out-of-state independent schools approved in their state that don't meet the standards that we are expecting to pay tuition to in-state independent schools. I wonder that, I was actually thinking, as I was looking at the budget information, and that's always at the end of the packet, if that is something we might pay for an independent opinion on. I know that Jennifer had talked possibly about, I can't remember if it was AG's officer from whom internally, but there seems to be a disconnect, and I can't imagine it being the intent that we would be applying a more rigorous standard for receiving tuition to our Vermont independent schools than those out-of-state.
I can actually answer that one, Kim, because this has been a subject that periodically comes before the legislature and is discussed and analyzed. And, you know, it's, the legislature over the years has, you know, explicitly made the decision not to address that issue. Part of the, part of the, part of the, what's at work here is that we, as a, for example, we as a board cannot, you know, direct a school out of state. There are constitutional, federal constitutional issues at play here, you know, not to belabor the subject. But it's very clear in the statute that, you know, we don't have that rulemaking authority to tell schools out-of-state what to do. And there are federal issues. And this this issue is, has been discussed over the years in the legislature. So it's clearly not within our realm.
But I guess, Oliver, we have invited, or we, the legislature, with Act 173, created two categories of independent schools to, in Vermont. And so to have established a separate standard for receiving public tuition for our independent schools, they can certainly remain approved. But now we have approved to receive tuition as a second category. And I think that that is a legislative fix in, I can't remember which, 828, maybe? I can't remember which section it is that is blanketed, apparently, to indicate payment to, I guess, you either operate, it's the section of the law that says you operate a school or you pay an approved independent school. But then subsequently, Act 173 established payment for independent schools as separately approved and approved for tuition. So 173 came after the other, and I believe there needs to be a legislative fix. Otherwise, I think, as as we were talking in our Subcommittee, we would be expecting more of our independent schools in-state than those out-of-state. And I think that that would not be the intent for our public school dollars to have established what we expect to pay independent schools in-state and then have it be irrelevant for those tuition dollars for Vermont students going out of state. And I think that that is something we must pursue.
Yeah, I, the 173 is about the approval of Vermont independent schools. So I think we need to stick within those those bounds.
I'm not, again, Oliver, I will respectfully, I'm talking about whether or not we need to pursue this with the legislature and/or get another opinion about whether or not the section that says you pay an approved out-of-state independent school would not have to look at what's stated in 173. And it may be that that's the case, but then I believe there needs to be a legislative fix to that section and in that we are looking at, you know, Title 16, and we need to consider that work. I think we need to, and I, Tom, I don't know if you want to weigh in, because I don't, it seemed as though there could be really unfortunate and unintended consequences, particularly for those independents that are in our border communities.
Jennifer, did you want to respond briefly in terms of, if there's been some, have the AOE Legal Counsel weighed in on this question?
They did at our last Subcommittee meeting. And actually, I think Dawn is on the phone, so.
Oh, yeah.
Dawn, I'm going to kick it over to you, because I don't want to put words in your mouth. But I, you know, the the understanding is that this is, you know, currently, it's in the statute. And it, Oliver, you're right. I mean, it does implicate federal constitutional law. But Dawn, if you want to chime in.
If you can give us the, a very brief analysis, Dawn, if you feel comfortable with that. But I don't want to, we do need to, I don't want to have our meeting be consumed by this. So I think we should, we need to make a decision here and move on. So Dawn, if you could provide a brief summary, that would be great.
So Savitha, is there another Donna here? Because it was, I did not, I did not meet with the Subcommittee. I'm wondering if, Emily, who did?
I think Emily mentioned that she had spoken with you. But my, and so I'm sorry, because I assumed that you were sort of the, the originator of the analysis. So.
So can I ask, because we're not going to solve this here, can I ask the Subcommittee to to look at this and come and come back to us with a recommendation? And we can take it up at our next meeting.
And let me just suggest, too, given the timeline that we're under to wait to get through the comments, this is a big issue. This is an important issue. I think what I'd like to do is have that be something that the Subcommittee Subcommittee will consider after we make it through the comments, because I want to make sure that we reach the January deadline. Because whatever changes are made are not going to come out of the Subcommittee. And I feel that's worth it.
We need to stay focused on the work at hand.
Right.
And stand our lane.
Okay, so if we are ready, I do have a motion that I've prepared, and I'm going to share my screen just so that you all can read along with me. Be one second. Okay, can you all see? It should be a motion for Agenda Item F. Okay, so I'm just going to read this for the record. I hereby move that the board ratify the approach laid out in Chair Olson's November 29th, 2021 letter to the Vermont State Board of Education members, Megan Roy, the Act 173 Advisory Group Chair, and the Agency of Education Secretary Dan French, and adopt the following timeline. First, that the Act 173 Advisory Group will review all public comments concerning issues that fall within the scope of its work as mandated by Act 173 and will provide the State Board of Education in advance of its January 2022 meeting with consensus recommendations on any changes that it thinks are warranted in light of oral or written comment received during the Rule Series 2200 public comment period. Second, that the State Board of Education Rule Series 2200 Subcommittee will review all public comments concerning issues that are not mandated by Act 173 and will provide the State Board of Education in advance of its January 2022 meeting with consensus recommendations on any changes that it thinks are warranted in light of oral or written comment received during the Rule Series 2200 public comment period. Third, the delegates of the Act 173 Advisory Group and the Rule Series 2200 Subcommittee will attend the State Board of Education meeting on January 19th, 2022, in order to explain any recommended changes to the proposed rules based upon public comment received. Fourth, at its January 19th, 2022 meeting, that the State Board of Education will discuss changes to the proposed rules as recommended by the Act 173 Advisory Group and the Rule Series 2200 Subcommittee and vote provisional approval of the proposed amendments to Rule Series 2200. And fifth, at its February 16th, 2022 meeting, that the State Board of Education will vote to approve the final Rule Series 2200 and empower the chair or his delegate to work with the Agency of Education staff to make any necessary changes to the form before presenting the final document to the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules in March 2022.
So you've, you've heard the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Jobson. Is there any discussion? Yes, Kim?
So I'm just, I don't recall this type of formality in the last round last spring. And there had been some need to, I think, I think John had pushed us out another month because of the feedback. And I'm just anticipating if we're just hearing the feedback in January, what is the, what is the situation if this were to need to be pushed another month? And what is the backend timeline? If you'll recall, I think, for the Publix, when we were looking to get this done in time. time, for them to have full ability to consider for their budgeting process, we were done, I think, in the middle of the summer. We submitted, I believe, in April or May. So I want to know how binding this is, or why this was necessary as a formality in this process.
So we did have, so, so John Carroll did establish timelines and reviewed those periodically with the group, and, you know, one of the challenges that John encountered, or well, the full board encountered, was that things, you know, had a tendency to slip. We saw that happening, and that's where the timeline, you know, he put it before the board was a useful tool to keep people on task. So we certainly, you know, we can't sort of bind future action in this board, but we do need to set out and be really clear about our expectations, so that we can keep a schedule, right? And if, if something comes up, you know, we certainly have the ability to, to change course. In fact, we have changed course, right? So the original timeline, which had been reviewed by this board on no fewer than three occasions over the past year, this action that we've, we're, we're actually taking is actually modifying and extending that timeline in view of the, the last minute comment that we've received. But we do need to keep a, some semblance of a schedule and keep a number of different stakeholders sort of coordinated and aligned with that, with a common timeline. So that's really, I see that this is. Mr. Secretary? And somebody on the phone, if you wouldn't mind muting yourself, ending digits three, six. Mr. Secretary?
Yeah, thanks. You know, just picking up on that theme, I'm not sure to what extent the agency gave feedback on this timeline, since we'll be charged with doing some of the technical drafting and so forth, so we might want to give some input based on our schedule of work.
Are you proposing a different timeline, Mr. Secretary?
I would just suggest that there should be some consultation with the technical staff at the agency on setting the timeline, and I'm not sure that's occurred. I'd have to get specific, you know, and put this on the calendar relative to some other work we're doing, just to have some stability in the scheduling.
Okay.
So, Oliver, I mean, I think if we pass the motion today, you know, it basically keeps everyone on this timeline, and I think if it becomes clear at our January meeting that, you know, either there's a lot of work that needs to be done, or whatever, we can always move at that time to amend the timeline, correct?
Just as we've, we're doing right now, we're amending the timeline right now. The original, just as a reminder, the original timeline that this board discussed and reviewed on no fewer than three occasions had us moving these rules to LCAR now. This, this was the meeting we were supposed to approve and move the, the work product to LCAR. Kim?
And the backend question, can anybody remind me how long the process takes with LCAR? Again, these do not go into effect, at least as I understand it, until July 1, 2023, I believe. If, maybe I'm wrong, maybe there are portions that would go into effect sooner.
There's, so, so Kim, this is why it's important, right? There are portions of this that go into effect sooner, and I want to remind this committee, you know, there are some important health and safety matters pertaining to students that go into effect, you know, you know, effectively upon passage, right? So, and, and there are also some, you know, matters concerning, you know, civil rights of students that also should be going into effect immediately, right? The, the special education provisions, you're correct, they don't go into effect until 2023. But these other matters pertaining to health and safety in students and their civil rights, I, I really want to make sure that we're not delaying the implementation of that.
Yeah, the thing, too, is even with regard to the Act 173 changes, my understanding from the Agency of Education is that as soon as the rules are approved by LCAR, the agency is going to begin working with all of the schools that will be affected by them to help them get ready, so that when the rules actually become effective July 1st, 2023, the schools will be ready to comply with the rules. So even though, you know, from our perspective, once we're done, we're done well in advance of the July 1st, 2023 deadline, from the agency's perspective and from the schools that will be affected by these rules, they've got a lot of work to do between the time that the rules become final and when they become effective.
Tammy?
Yeah, and this question may be for Jennifer. What are the implications for the LCAR process if the timeline slips a month, right? I'm just hearing, you know, there, there may be reasons that it needs to slip. We have a proposed timeline here, but we do have this other process over here. Does that derail the LCAR process if, for example, this all slipped by 30 days? It's just helpful for me to understand, sort of, how close are we bumping up against those timelines?
As far as LCAR, I mean, it gets to LCAR when it gets to LCAR, it's, I think that the pressing issue is that it, we're delaying the implementation of matters that deal with health and safety of students and, and their civil rights.
Don't we also have eight months from the time that we initiate formal rulemaking to conclude it?
No, that, that was a, that was sort of the original expectation that was set, the timeline, yeah. So I, again, I think that the purpose here is we're just trying to provide some structure, because in the absence of a plan, right, it's just going to continue to go on and on and on and on, and, and we need to bring this to closure before, you know, certainly before I have any more gray hairs. Unless there's any other discussion, I'd like to call this for a vote, so we can move forward with our agenda. All those in favor of adopting the motion as presented, please say yes and raise your hand.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Those opposed, please say no and raise your hand. And are there any abstentions? Excellent, the motion appears to pass unanimously. The motion does carry unanimously. Thank you, Jennifer, Kim, and Tom, for your continued hard work on this issue. So I think probably that's a cue for Donna to provide a, an update on the closely related cousin of 2200.
Yes, the 7,000 series, you'll remember, is the first step in moving the accrediting agencies' discussions from the 7,000 series to the 2200 series, so that all of those will be together in the 2200 series. There were two changes that your proposed rules made. One was to repeal a number of rules that had no substantive purpose for being in rule, and the second was to give notice that the list of accrediting agencies that is listed in 7320 will be repealed on July 1, 2024, because by that time, you are intending that there will be some sort of a process that will be put into place in the 2200 series. There was a public hearing on, excuse me, December 1st, and the deadline for written comments expired on December 12th. There was just one comment that was submitted, and it is not a substantive kind of change. There were two parts to the comment. One is that in 7320, which is the, the rule that you propose will be repealed on, in 2024, that the reference to regional accrediting agencies be changed to institutional accrediting agencies, because apparently the term regional is no longer used. And the second, and this was the comment from this person, from one of the accrediting agencies that lists, that is listed there, that the, the name of that agency be updated. So I, I have prepared a, an updated marked up rule, but I, I wanted to bring this to your attention now and then ask, do you want to discuss this in January, or shall I just prepare all of the forms for final submission to LCAR and the Secretary of State, and bring those to you in January, and you can just vote on them then?
I, I would suggest getting everything wrapped up and bring to us for action in, in January. I don't think this, this is a fairly minimal change.
Okay, I can do that.
I'm not hearing any objection, or saying any, good. Wonderful, thank you so much, Donna. So just as a reminder, before we move on from this agenda item, you've all received the, the public comment that was submitted under 2200, and it's, you know, really important that we all review and give due consideration to that comment. So this is obviously an ongoing process, but I appreciate your attention to that. So with that, unless you have anything else, Jennifer, I think we can turn to item G.
Yes, that's fine.
Excellent. So Tammy, the floor is yours.
Good morning, once again. Just wanted to provide a brief update on the activities of the Roles and Responsibilities Subcommittee. As a reminder, on September 21st of this fall, Chair Olson, on behalf of both the State Board and the Agency, requested an extension to January 2022 for our work, both the Subcommittee and the State Board and the Agency, on sort of thinking through these issues of how we might better delineate roles and responsibilities between the two entities with an eye towards both efficiency and policy coherence going forward. To date, the Subcommittee's met four times over the course, it's basically since August, and we've made some really great progress, and much, many thanks to the Subcommittee members, you know, Lyle and Jennifer and Oliver and, and Dan for their active participation. This isn't always, this is a challenging conversation to have and to sort of think through all of this. What we've been doing, where we've landed as of right now, is our deliberations have really been focused on, on an organizational framework that distinguishes six functions to which the SBE and AOE may either take the lead or share, and that's the appeals processes, rulemaking, public input envisioning, district and supervisor union, governance, accountability and oversight, and approvals for independent schools and post-secondary institutions. And as a Subcommittee, we've been working through and thinking about what are, what, sort of, how are things currently organized with respect to sort of these buckets? What works? What doesn't work currently? And what are the opportunities as we, as we sort of look forward to how we might better sort of delineate and restructure these roles and responsibilities? We're at a point now where we're really mostly focused on the rulemaking bucket, which I'm sure you all can appreciate requires a lot of conversation and consideration. And our goal is to sort of have some draft language and some ideas that we can bring back to the full board as January meeting, between now and then. We have, we're going to have some additional Subcommittee meetings, and that focus primarily on the rulemaking bucket, but also, as a part of that process, we'll be inviting some reflections from outside stakeholder groups on all of the roles and responsibilities in all of these buckets, but in particular, rulemaking. As a next step, we also, though, have a responsibility to respond to the legislature are, with respect to a report. And in, as I noted earlier, Chair Olson and his correspondence with the Subcommittee, I mean, with the House and Senate Committees, had asked for an extension on the full report, but we still have an obligation to provide an interim report. And so I've prepared a sort of overview summary, and that is due on December 15th, which happens to be today. So just a brief update, happy to have other Subcommittee members chime in if they had anything else to add, and I'll, I'll stop there and open the floor for questions.
Excellent, thank you, Tammy. And on that, we'll, Jennifer has a motion prepared to authorize you to submit that report, at least on our behalf, in, in tandem with the Secretary and the Agency. So I'll see if there are any other questions, and then I'll let Jennifer introduce her motion. Okay, not hearing any, Jennifer?
All right, thank you. I move that the State Board of Education authorize Board Member Tammy Colby to work with the Agency of Education staff to draft and submit an interim report of the Roles and Responsibilities Subcommittee to the General Assembly by the statutory deadline of December 15th, 2021.
You've heard the motion, is there a second? It's been seconded by Tim Gleason. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, not hearing any, I'll call for a vote here. All those in favor of adopting the motion, please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, please raise your hand and say no. Are there any abstentions? The motion appears to have carried. The motion has carried, and you have adopted the motion and authorized Professor Colby to file that report, interim report. Thank you very much. Tammy, any final words?
Just a word of thanks again to the Subcommittee, and in particular, you know, Dan French and, and Lyle and Jenna and you for all your contributions in the process, and I'm looking forward to a robust discussion around this topic at our next meeting, full board meeting.
Excellent, and thank you, Tammy, for leading this effort. It's, it's a really important piece of work, and looking forward to sort of clarifying some of the, the gray matter out there. So, so we are pretty much right on schedule with two minutes to spare. Mr. Brown, I am going to turn the meeting over to you for agenda item H, and let you lead this part of the meeting.
Thank you, Chair Olson. So as a follow-up to our last meeting, where we heard from the Winuski School District about their diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives this morning, it's my pleasure to welcome the representatives from the Burlington School District. I hope they are online with us, and so they are going to share with us some of their successes and challenges, implementation of programs, and things that they've accomplished and hope to accomplish in the future. And I just want to add that after today's meeting, we're hoping to tap into some of the more rural schools. So this isn't an initiative that's exclusive to Chindan County, it's a statewide initiative, and this is a great opportunity for the board to listen and to learn what's happening in each of four different districts around the state. So without further ado, I am going to introduce to you Superintendent Tom Flanagan, who is the Superintendent of the Burlington School District, and Sparks, who is the Equity Director, and ask them to share some of their projects, some of their successes and challenges. Of course, there are always challenges within the district, so Superintendent?
Patrick, let me just make sure he's on, because I think he headed down for 9:15, so hold on one second, please.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, what we could, what we could do while we're waiting, Kim and Dawn, I think your update is fairly sure, short on agenda item J, so perhaps why don't you, we take that up while we're waiting, and then we can, we can pick it up from there? Thanks. Thanks.
Patrick, he will be right with us.
Okay.
It's like he's just joined.
So we'll wait, Oliver?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, Chair Olson?
Yes.
Should we go ahead?
Absolutely.
Okay. And once again, Superintendent Flanagan, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry.
I just wanted to introduce you to the State Board of Education, the Honorable Members of the State Board, and our Secretary of Education, the Honorable Dan French is online also listening. Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules, Sparks and Superintendent Flanagan, to update us on some of the initiatives, some of the successes and challenges with diversity, equity and inclusion in the Burlington School District. So in no special order, I'm going to ask you to proceed.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Patrick. We appreciate the invitation and we are honored to have the opportunity to talk to you all today about our work in addressing racial equity, inclusion and diversity in Burlington Schools. We sent over a PowerPoint presentation. Were you all able to see that? Excellent. So I won't put that up, but maybe I'll talk through slides. Is that, is that the best way to do it? Or would you like me to present?
If you wouldn't mind presenting, I think that that would probably work best. If you, I don't know how familiar you are with Teams, but there's a share button just to the left of the leave button.
Okay.
Has an up arrow.
Yeah, I see that. See.
Would it be helpful for somebody else to share?
Yeah.
I wonder?
We are not using Teams very much.
I know. Yeah.
Sometimes helpful if somebody else shares it, you can see a little better.
Yeah.
I'm trying to find it.
Suzanne, would you mind? Are you in a position where you could share that?
I am pulling it up right now.
Excellent. Thank you. There we go.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I also want to introduce our Director of Equity, Director Sparks is here with me today. And he and I put this presentation together and we will be talking it through. I'll take the lead, but Director Sparks will jump in when, when the time is right. And also he's available here to answer questions. Director Sparks has a deep knowledge of our work here in Burlington and has been a trusted leader for me in coming to this district and being able to lead on this work. All right.
Before you get started, somebody with phone number 09, if you wouldn't mind muting yourself, please. Thank you.
Okay. So if we can go to the next slide. All right. So the, I wanted to start with the Y, which is, you know, our, our community is multicultural, multiracial, multilingual. We are proud to say that our students represent 48 different home languages. And, and we just have a great diversity in our schools. And it's something when I started doing a listening tour back in March of 2020, I heard from the community how important diversity, inclusion and belonging was to our community. And so that's something that I knew coming in was a priority of the community and was one of my priorities coming in too. So I think it's part of why we are, we are, we are a good match. But you can see, you can see our demographics there, but I think it's also, it's, you know, it's important to note that we have historic opportunity gaps that are a part of our, our policy to, to address disparities and eliminate disparities. And we believe that we need to really address them head on, that we can't shy away and hide from them. And the district prior to me has done a lot of good work around understanding our data and reporting on our data and, and being clear on where we are. And we've, we, I think have, you know, even stepped that up another notch in terms of clarity and transparency on where we are. So it's also, you know, important for us because we're hearing from our students directly and our families that they, they have been experiencing discrimination and racism in our schools. I met with a group, a number of groups of multilingual families early in the, in my time here. And I was talking to them about COVID. I wanted to explain what we were doing to ensure that our, our schools were safe and our students were safe and just to meet those, those communities. And they wanted, they quickly kind of shifted the conversation, which I appreciated, to, to their primary concern, which is that they feel like they, they experience discrimination in our schools. And so that's something that I felt a great obligation to work on right away when I, when I got here. So we can go to the next slide. So one of the things we did right away in, in August of 2020 is we developed a set of six goals. And all of these goals are just address, get at disparities. But I highlighted two of them here for you today because they're kind of most specifically related to the equity work. Although the other, the other goals are, are academic achievement related goals. So access to AP honors courses and addressing the disparity in access, addressing the opportunity gap in academic achievement. And we were looking at third and eighth grade specifically. Those are, those are in the other goals. And then these goals specifically, Goal One is about schools being restorative and equitable communities and creating a restorative district. And that restore, that restoration is good for everybody, but really specifically originated with the, with the disparities we were seeing in suspensions. And so as, as a way to reduce suspensions and to improve relationships and a sense of belonging across the district. Then the other major goal is for our faculty and staff to, to look more like our students, our students. Our students tell us they, they want to see teachers who look like them and they want teachers who really understand them. And so that's one of our goals. And one of our, one of our big pieces of work here is really understanding, making sure we had the systems to understand what our, what our baseline is. So we currently have 5.7% of, of teachers and, and principals identify as, as individuals of color. And so that's something that, that was really the first step is understanding where we were. But we really wanted to frame our, our work around goals, right? Around sort of clear goals that, that address key concerns and are clear to the community.
The only thing I would also add to this particular goal is that as we look at this particular goal, we want to make sure as we bring faculty and staff in of a global majority, we are also talking about retention and what do we do in order to really support them?
Yeah. Yeah. And we have a lot of, a lot of work to do in this, in this area. So we'll, we'll talk through some of that as we, as we keep moving. So we can go to the next slide. So one of the, one of the early decisions that I made before I got here after consulting with the team and talking with Director Sparks was to create an Office of Equity and to have a one person who led that office. We have had Equity Director positions, but we haven't had an office that had a budget and had a staff and had a, had a clear charge. And so we, we created an Office of Equity. I asked Director Sparks to lead that office. And, and we've built that office out a bit by, by moving some people who were in other places into that office. So the Equity Instructional Coach and the Restorative Practices Coordinator position, and then also adding a couple of positions, the Reengagement Coordinator position. And then Director Sparks has also worked with us, has led our, our HHB work. And so that, that we needed to build out because we have a settlement agreement with the Department of Justice around sex-based discrimination that we are taking very seriously. And so we had, we brought someone in to do that work. And in addition to that, we've added some school-based positions to support restorative practices in schools. And I'll talk more about that later. And those, those have sort of dotted, they'll sit in schools, but have a direct line to the Equity Office in terms of the, the framing and structuring. We also, right away, we have a, we have a board member who, and, and a Director of Multilingual Learners, who brought to me a concern about our ability to support our multilingual families and the fact that our multilingual liaisons, we have a group of liaisons who support families, that they were underpaid and were not 12-month employees. So we, we prioritize that as, as the single addition to our budget for this fiscal year and, and made multilingual liaisons 12, 12-month and increased their pay. And I, I apologize, but I can't see anyone as I'm talking. So if you, if you want to jump in, just feel free to, to jump in and ask questions.
I'm watching the boards. If I see any hands go up, I'll, I'll call on those folks.
Yep. Okay. Great. Thank you very much. And then we also worked on leadership, our own leadership. So we worked with two people, Shane Safir and Jamila Dugan. And we had worked with Shane Safir a little bit and she, she wrote a book called The Listening Leader. And she partners with a person whose name is Jamila Dugan. And they, they did a year of kind of leadership development for us. And, and we, we delved specifically into leadership around race inequity. And we're going to continue that work. They, they, they put out, they wrote a book and are doing a national nationwide course right now and are really busy with that. So they're doing some individual coaching of principals right now. But we are, we put out an RFP for additional, to continue this work, but with another, another partner. So really investing in the leadership in our principals, our directors, our executive directors, our cabinet, our leadership team in, in, in understanding and doing their own work around race inequity and their own personal work around race inequity so that they can, they can lead. Go to the next slide. Thank you. And then early on, when, when, when I came on, it was, there was a reckoning, a national reckoning after the murder of George Floyd. There was a lot of, there were protests in, in town. There was a lot of action and, and organized action in Burlington. And the city declared racism a public health emergency. And so we signed on to that. So I just think it's, and created a bunch of, a number of actions that we would take in, in response to that. But the connection to the work the city is doing is, is important because we are, we are one community. And it's, it's been important to me and to my, and to our team that we work together as a city. A lot of the, the stuff that we are seeing right now in schools, where we've had a number of cases of white students using the N-word in our schools this year. And we really need to bring the, bring families in and bring the community in to help with that. Because what students are telling us is there are, moms are telling us that they're hearing that from someone in the house. And so, so, you know, it's just a lot of work we need to do together as a community to address racism. We also, our school board, as a part of that declaration, wanted to make a statement, a visual statement. And, and so they, they directed me to raise the Black Lives Matter flag at all of our schools and all of our school programs. So, so we did that. And then also coming out of that summer, you know, we were, the City Council asked us to eliminate school resource officers, or actually asked the city, because the school resource officers aren't ours. And so we, we made, we agreed with them to, that we would study it, that we would learn about the School Resource Officer Program and we would make a recommendation. And so I asked Director Sparks to lead a task force to look into our School Resource Officer Program. And we did that and we ended up, that, that task force recommended that we reduce school resource officers by, from two to one. But that was also at the same time where the Burlington Police Department was being asked to reduce their overall force. And we're struggling with staffing as a result of that. And they were unable to provide the, the one school resource officer that we had asked to retain. And so we currently have a police, a Burlington Police Department employee who's our liaison. And we work closely with them, but we don't have school resource officers in our schools. And this is something that our, our community was pretty, pretty split on. But when we, when we asked them about it in a survey, but we know that we have many students, many of our students of color have said that the school resource officer and having a police officer in their school is a, is a, is a, is a trigger for them. Something that makes them feel uncomfortable and, and, and so that's something that we need to account.
Patrick, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Superintendent, on the previous slide, I did have my hands up. Since some of our board members are outside of Chittenden County, they may not be familiar with Parent University. Can you explain that for the purposes of the board?
Sure. Yes. We have a, we have a wonderful program called Parent University where we bring our multilingual families together as a community to, to learn, to be connected to resources and, and, and to celebrate their, their, their children, their culture. And it's a, it's been a really amazing program that we've run and that we continue to run that I've had a couple of chances to meet with them as a, as a group. And there's just such a, a great power in the connection across that group and in the resources that we're able to support people with through that. And, and part of, this is different from Parent University, but part of Parent University is connected to our multilingual liaisons. And so we have, I think it's eight now, eight multilingual liaisons who are individuals who connect with families to help us make sure that families have the information they need and are connected to the resources that we're able to provide as a district. And they're just an incredibly important part of our, of our school district as we work to engage our, our multilingual families. Did that get it for you, Patrick?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. I appreciate that. Okay, so we can move on to the next slide. And then our work, our work continues. So into, into this year, we, we had a, we had a drag ball at the, at our homecoming that was put on by our student, a student group and a, and a faculty mentor who had really been pushing me on, on making sure that we were including the LGBTQ plus community in our conversation about, about inclusion and diversity and equity. And so I, we, I attended the drag ball and, and then I also, the morning, that morning I attended a meeting at a, at a middle school where I heard from a group of students about their experiences in, in middle school and how, how challenging that was, it is for them to be middle schoolers in a system that doesn't understand what they're going through. They really felt like we as a system didn't, they have individual, some individual staff members who understand them, but that we as a system didn't. And they felt, they've experienced a lot of harm. And we actually have the Department of Justice here because of discrimination against LGBT or A's harassment of LGBTQ plus students. And so it's, it's a significant issue for us and that was sort of a catalyst for me.
Sorry, Tom. So, yeah, because you made a few references to this settlement. What's the history? When, when did this activity happen?
Director Sparks is, is, is leading on it. So Director Spark, can you give a little bit of background on, on the settlement agreement, when it started and?
Yes, it started back, the investigation against the district by the Department of Justice started back in 2016, where there was a group of parents at one of our schools that reported originally to the HRC that their kids were originally to the HRC that their kids were not being protected based on sex. And that led to an investigation by the Department of Justice. Back in 2018, we entered into, I'm sorry, 2020, we entered into the settlement agreement with the Department of Justice, which is very specific to what we need to do in order to really keep kids safe and keep kids, when they can make concerns or when they file a complaint, we are thorough with the investigation. So, since then, we have done a lot of work, including hiring a specific HHB coordinator that has really supported the work. We now have non-discrimination coordinators in all of our buildings. We have Title IX specialists in all of our buildings. We have two or more designated employees in all of our buildings. And we are doing weekly and monthly work with Lynn, Lynn, and Blackman. So, we have been doing that for the last two years and that will continue probably up until the end of 2023.
And that is training for our, those teams at the schools who are assigned to either investigate or manage the harassment, hazing harassment and bullying policy.
So, all the trainings have been differentiated. So, as an example, we spend individual training with the designated employees. The Title IX specialist gets, specialist receive very different training. And then, we have the non-discrimination coordinators that are also a part of the work that receives a different training. And then, once a month, we bring them all together to make sure we are all doing the same work and that all the teams understand the depth of the work. And with the district coordinator, they spend time in all the schools supporting the teams. But, the main thing about this piece of work is really making sure we are doing investigations with fidelity. The non-discrimination coordinators are reviewing those investigations. And we are also working with teachers and administrators to make sure they understand the processes. So, the Office of Equity, we've also created a very thorough binder that walks anyone through our policies, procedures, how to do an investigation, Title IX, and any other information that one might want to understand or better understand about the settlement agreement and the work that we have put into it thus far.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we have a LGBTQ+ task force that is, we've just published that and people are applying, individuals are applying to be a part of that. We're going to, that's going to be half-student, half-adult in terms of participation. And I'm just very excited for the recommendations that come out of that. And those recommendations, we're developing a strategic plan right now that we are going to present to the board January 4th. That's a community-driven, co-created strategic plan with a group of 50 people who are a part of our community and every different role and space you could imagine. And so, I've asked for this task force to make recommendations that will drive, help drive parts of our strategic plan. The other thing is, on here is about participating in training. So, the city has a racial equity, inclusion and belonging office that's new. And that office is putting together training for all city employees. So, we're not officially a part of the city, but we asked if we could participate. And so, we have a number of people who are participating in training with the city. And likely, while we're focusing sort of mostly on our leadership right now, we're going to open that up next year to teachers and staff.
Well, currently, I'm sorry. Currently, we have about 23 teachers connected and doing the work with the city. So, we do have some of our leaders, but a lot of teachers were very interested in this work. So, we have a significant group of teachers connected with the city doing this work.
Yeah. Thank you. And we want to, I don't know if it'll be this exact training, but we want to bring this kind of training to all of our staff across the district over the next couple of years. And then, we also have a second year of Equity Conversa-, of an Equity Conversation series that the Equity Office is running to help bring the community together, to talk about issues of inequities that, and have conversations about that that are public. All right. The next slide. And sort of continuing along that, we, I talked about this, the GSAs in middle school and high school and sort of the catalyst for the LGBTQ task force. We also had a really powerful experience this past summer where the Office of Equity, you can hear the Office of Equity's done a huge amount of really important work for us, for our district, past year and a half. They ran a racial justice academy for students and paid students to essentially provide, do some of their own work and understanding and provide us feedback as a district on what we needed to work on. And they came up with a series of recommendations for me and we are integrating those into our work together. And I will say, you know, students, I was so proud of our students because they put me on the hot seat, like I've never been on the hot seat before, asking me about what we were going to do and when we were going to do it and how I was going to be accountable to doing it. So, I just, you know, the power of part of this, of, the part of the work of equity and inclusion and belonging for us is bringing students into the center of that work and really listening to their experiences and having, helping, and allowing them to drive some of our work. And that's been a big shift for us and one that's uncomfortable sometimes, but is needed. And then, I talked about expanding RP in schools, but we do have our restorative practices teams and a restorative practices specialist, or we will, we're actually hiring some of those positions now in all of our, in all of our schools. The next slide, that might be, that's it. So, those are some of the initiatives that we're working on and kind of where we are, we're right in the thick of it. There's a lot of really, you know, important work, complex work, challenging work that's happening in our district. And it's one of our priorities. When I came in, I said our priorities were, based on a number of conversations I had with people in the community, we're going to be equity engagement and deep learning. And I think we're kind of doing all of those things in service of our students.
Excellent. Wonderful presentation. And we have already three board members queued up. So, Jennifer, Tammy, and then Kim.
There we go. I couldn't unmute. So, first of all, I just want to just say thank you, both through the presentation, but the work that you've done, which is substantive, that seems clear to me, but also very helpful to have you put it, you know, to share that framework with the board. And, you know, hopefully, I could imagine that other school districts would be really interested in the work that you've done. And you've really provided a great template for thinking about these issues and responding to them. So, I just wanted to acknowledge, first of all, the work that you've done because it's really impressive. I had a question because I'm, you know, I was wondering if you could sort of provide an example of how you would deal with, you know, for instance, you mentioned, you know, the use of a racial epithet. If there were a student, you know, who were, you know, caught or accused of, you know, saying something that was hurtful, like what would be the process, you know, with the restorative work that you're doing? How would you address that? I'm just, I'm curious.
Yeah. We have some, we won't get too into very specific examples, but we have, we have learned a lot just this year about this. And I'll give a quick learning that we have first, and then, I'd like to ask Director Sparks to talk about how we're addressing it from a restorative lens at the school. One of the things that we learned though, this year, where we had a pretty significant situation at one of our middle schools over the summer that came into the school year with students using, white students using the N-word. And we treated that initially in a hazing harassment and bullying framework and were reluctant to communicate any details. And what we heard from our community was, our kids are coming home and telling us that something major happened and we don't know what it was and you got to help us. So, one of the things that we learned from that, and we've done this now a couple of times, I've made a broad statement denouncing racism and hate speech and the N-word. And we, and our principals are now doing that too by simply acknowledging that something happened, whatever happened, happened, while also protecting the privacy of students. But, acknowledging what happened, denouncing it, and saying what we're doing and resources to provide to students, which are helpful actually, my, for my own, my own child. My kid goes to this school and we got an email from the principal and my wife said, "Ask my daughter about it." So, what, you know, what, what are you hearing? What's happening? Right? And they were able to have a conversation that they may not have otherwise had because we're communicating. So, communication is really a critical piece of this and openness and the learning of the community has been really important. And Director Sparks, you want to talk a little bit about the restorative lens?
Yes. So, one of the things we used to do historically was try to suspend our way out of these kind of situations. Doesn't work. So, we think about accountability and responsibility. The thing that is vital is the teaching part of it. So, what we have done, when a student causes harm like that, the Office of Equity, we've created curriculum to really start to speak to that, to work individually with the students that are causing the harm and having conversations with the student's parents. Because students pick these words up from somewhere, so we want to make sure we are engaging with the student's parent, but also understanding, we are talking about, in some cases, elementary school students who are developing, learning and growing. And if we don't teach them about the word and why using that word is wrong and harmful, then we're not doing what we need to do as an educational system. The other part of what we have done, we have created a whole series called an anti-hate campaign that we're going to be rolling out district-wide. We have started in Hunt Middle School and it speaks to racism, it speaks to language, is going to give parents and students of the global majority an opportunity of coming in and working with us. Because one of the things we have learned, Superintendent Flanagan just mentioned, parents are saying they are being left out. So, we have been meeting with parents of the global majority who have told us they don't care about RP, they want to know what we are doing in real time when harm is being done to their kids and they want to be informed. So, as part of our anti-hate campaign, we are going to give them a forum and an opportunity to talk to faculty, staff, and students about the harm that's being caused to them when their kids are impacted. Because one of the things we have not taken into account, when students are being harmed by hatred and racism bigotry, it also impacts that student's entire family. So, we are going to give the parents an opportunity of working with us to address hatred throughout the system. But, I think the main thing again is education and really giving students an opportunity to work with us, to learn from their behavior.
Thanks. Thank you for that question.
Oops. Sorry. Professor Colby, Kim, and then Gabrielle.
Good morning, Superintendent Flanagan, Director Sparks. And I'll just echo Jennifer's comments, which is, thank you for all the hard work. It's hard work and it's very much appreciated by youth community. I wanted to circle back to something that you mentioned early in your presentation. You reference AP class-taking. And, you know, racialized tracking, particularly at the high school, is an important issue. And I believe, you know, at Burlington, this is something you've been wrestling with and something like 41% of your high school population is BIPOC, but only 20% of your student, BIPOC students, for example, take AP classes. So, I'm curious if you could maybe give us a window into what sort of actions you're taking on that front, what your short and long-term plans are to sort of address these issues of racialized tracking, particularly at the high school level? Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you. I mean, the first thing was to make it a goal that we needed to address and to hold ourselves accountable to it. I think if we shy away from the reality and we don't set a target to improve the problem or to eliminate the problem, we will never do that. It has led to some really hard conversations and hurt feelings, I'll say that, just talking about it. And everyone kind of looking around figuring out, wait, what am I doing in this? We are really still learning. What we know is that there are racial disparities in access to AP classes. We don't have the disparities in dual enrollment, which is interesting. So, we're looking at AP honors and dual enrollment. AP and honors, we have disparities, dual enrollment, we don't. And we've heard from, and so, we're unpacking why. We have heard from students, so I've observed it just in going into classes and seeing different classes. So, one of the things that we do, that we have done here historically is create different math classes, a Concepts of Algebra II and an Algebra II. And if you go into Concepts of Algebra II and Algebra II, you, there are, there are, there's a problem. And so, we are going to eliminate, we're phasing out those classes. And so, I was, and then, and then there, we've created an opt-in form. So, there's the process of accessing those courses where there's a question about how much, how you get into those classes, right? And the process for that. And there's, there, so we're working to understand that. One of the things that the school counselors did was create an opt-in form that allows fam-, that allows families that don't get some kind of nomination or aren't, you know, picked for the class based on their grades or their test scores in math, they can opt in. But, that has been in place for a couple of years and has not changed the access level. So, that's not working. We are, but that could work, but I think what we've learned from students, so I asked students, why, what's up with this opt-in form? Why is it, like, are you seeing it? They didn't know, they had never seen it. And what they told me is that, three students in particular who are in AP classes, who are connected to Upward Bound. And I was like so incredibly frustrated that what they told me was the way that they learned about AP classes and how to get into them was through UVM, right? Was through Upward Bound at UVM, who I love, right? Upward Bound is great, we want to keep it. We love working with Matt and Adam, but we need to, we need to do that work ourselves, right? So, part of it is like our own responsibility. But, then there, what they told me is that, and so, I've been looking into this and I think they're, I think they're right. There are some really high-stakes decisions that we are asking seventh graders to make about their eighth-grade math placement because they can take algebra in eighth grade. And we do, we ask this question, you know, do you think you are well enough behaved, right? And motivated enough to take algebra? That's kind of the mode, right? And so, we asked, I told, I directed yesterday the middle school math team to take out the behavior question in that, in that form. And we have to do a better job of making sure that we are counseling students and families on how to do that. And I think it's not, it's not really simple and straightforward because we did even pick a number, we did, the team at Hunt did identify a number of families of students who they wanted to take the algebra class and they worked with families. And they said that still only 25% of those families ended up, or students ended up signing up for algebra. So, there's something else that's happening. But, what we're doing is phasing out the Concepts classes while identifying it as a problem and creating a target, listening to students about where the problem is and addressing those issues, taking away the Concepts, phasing out the Concepts classes and fixing the way that you sign up to get into those classes.
Excellent. Thank you. Kim and then Gabrielle gets the last question.
Thanks. And thank you, Tom and Sparks. And thank you for all the work you are all doing. I am wondering, and I'm hearing great examples of what's happening and identifying where there are racial disparities in the upper-level classes. Is the broad approach to looking at student data through an equity lens, is that reporting that happens for your board? And how did you go about identifying the indicators that get you there so that you can set those goals and have accountability to progress?
Yeah. We do have a policy, one of our, we have a school board, we have policies, right? Sort of the mandatory policies that you would find on the school board site and on our site too. But, we also have a- But we also have a policy document in how the superintendent and the school board work together. And one of the, there are two kind of primary policy titles. It's 1.0, which is global ends, and 1.1, which is reducing disparities. And so what we've done is put those together and say, our global ends are about reducing disparities. Because our non-FRL and white students are doing really well, if you look at their test scores. And that's just clear. But our students, our students of the global majority, our students who qualify for free reduced lunch, our students who have IEPs, our students who are English learners are not. And so our goals, so I showed you those two goals, those are kind of specific to restorative practices and hiring teachers of color. But the academic goals, the measure for those are all addressing disparities. And they mostly are FRL-related because of the correlation and the way that we're able to pull data for free reduced lunch versus non-free reduced lunch allows us to really set clear goals and have enough of a number that we're able to report out on it publicly. So yeah, that's how we, that is, we've combined really that global ends, right, our ultimate goals, and our reducing disparities, and then we report on it twice a year. So I have to report to the school board on 1.0, global ends, every year in the fall after Sback comes back, after the state assessment comes back. And then we do an equity report, which is reporting on that global, on that reducing disparities. We do that once a year in the early, late winter, early spring.
And with that, just a quick follow-up, is that taking other indicators beyond academics, discipline, data, participation? And I think you're clearly looking at your participation rates in higher-level classes. So are, those are not as discrete indicators as the academic Sback gap identifiers, but the other indicators? I wonder, I know that Essex Westford, where I had been on that board, coming up with those indicators was hard work for our Equity and Inclusion Director. But that is some of the most rich information that we would receive as a board, is the information on multiple indicators disaggregated around those disparities. And it was eye-opening, you can't unknow that data, and it really is compelling for future work. So anything to be learned in that area that might see resonance across the state so that we can start looking at things through that lens.
Yeah. Director Sparks, do you want to take that one?
Yes. One of the things I will say, the most important piece of data that we have started to look at is street data. And those are the direct voices from our students and parents. So when we did the Racial Justice Academy, one of the things we started out doing, we wanted 25 students, we ended up with 53. All of those students were students of the global majority. And they gave us a list of disparities and things that are not working for them in our classrooms, in our schools. Those recommendations that they gave us are being used by the strategic planning process. So the other thing that we look at, we definitely look at suspension data. We also, again, talk a lot with parents. So a lot of the data that we are using to really drive these changes as we think about racial disparities and inequities are coming directly from students. So we look at behavioral referrals, we look at who's getting kicked out of the classrooms, and now we are really trying to address the why. So historically, it has been students of the global majority getting suspended more than some of our other students and free and reduced lunch students. So as we move forward with this work, we will be spending more time looking at that street data, but also incorporating students. And it's not just student voice. As an example, when we did the SRO Task Force, we had a student that was the co-chair of that task force. As we are doing interviews now, we are including students as part of the interview, so they are at the table with us. So we are really coming up with very different ways to work with students, to really empower students. And again, it's not student voice, because when we did the Summer Racial Justice Academy, I didn't want to hear student voice, I wanted to embolden students. And sometimes you have to be careful for what you ask for, because they gave us an earful and it was hard to really hear how they are experiencing our schools. So as we move our work forward, we want to make sure, as we look at data, students actually are a part of creating that. So we are currently working on the Equity Inclusion Report now, and I'm going to specifically dedicate a section for students to do. Because we need to really hear from our students and parents as to how they experience our schools.
Great. Yeah, and our work with data is really evolving, mostly from our work with Shane Sevier and Jamila Dugan. They wrote a new book called Street Data. So we're being intentional about looking at satellite data, which is like your Sback scores, your suspension rates, and then also looking at street data, or map data, which is like some of the survey feedback we're getting from students. We get a lot of feedback from students and staff that we don't always use very well. And then the street data, which is really what are students telling us, right? And that's where we're getting really rich information. But we are reporting out on that satellite data, and we are looking at the suspension data, because that's been a historic disparity for students of color that we are looking at. And last year was an interesting year. Last year, actually, the disparity is not for students of color or males of color, it's for white males with IEPs. But last year was a weird year. And so we're anticipating that we probably, you know, that's going to be, that will definitely be an anomaly of a year, but we're interested to see what the trend looks like. But we are reporting on that regularly. I also meet with principals every other week, and I'm looking at their data with them every month on those indicators.
Thanks so much.
Gabrielle, final question. You may be unmute. Gabrielle, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. Gabrielle, it looks like you're still on mute. We may have lost her. So I just want to thank Director Sparks, Superintendent Flanagan, I want to thank you both for a really informative presentation. And, you know, just one thing I picked up on that I just wanted to reflect on, and that is language really matters and the use of the term global majority, I really appreciate because it's, you know, our students here in Vermont need to be reminded that there's a much bigger world out there, and we are in an increasingly globalized and interconnected society. And our students need to be reminded that, you know, there is a much bigger world out there. So I think, I just want to commend you on, your choice of words, I think, are really important, so.
And I just want to add my thanks, and thanks to the board for making this a possibility. Thanks, Superintendent Flanagan, thanks, Director Sparks, and thanks Chair Olson for making us go over a little bit.
Yeah.
Thank you all for your time and the work that you all do.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. We appreciate your leadership and thanks for having us on. Very, very much appreciated. Excellent. Take care. Thanks. Bye. All righty. So, Kim, item J, I'll let you and Donna give us a brief update.
Hi, everybody. I think it will be quite brief. We have begun looking at this, and I think we received information at the last meeting. The body of work to update, Chapter 11, Title 16, that addresses unified school districts. And that is really important to operationalize, the work happening in our, the majority now of our school districts have to sort of struggle to find themselves in the law in operating. And so the big body of work is to more or less technical updates. And Donna has been collaborating with Jim Demaree from, who is the Legislative Council. Donna and I had an opportunity to meet with Kate Webb, Chair Webb, and this work will begin in House Ed and with Jim. And to talk about how we might approach it, there's a second piece of this work that is something that has come before us with challenges, the somewhat disconnect in the ability to dissolve unified unions and have communities vote to leave. We've seen that challenge before us, where the process to have alternative structures approved going through the Act 46 process was very deliberate, intentional, study work happening, important indicators necessary to be reported on. The work to dissolve has been a matter of a vote, and then we find ourselves challenged with what we can or can't do to enable that dissolution. Some cases have been easier than others just by the virtue of their structure. That piece of this work is going to potentially draw more attention, be more challenging. And I think consequently, the strategy is going to be to have perhaps these two bills run in parallel to one another until they can come together so that at least the larger body will be able to be sort of reviewed and then ideally moved along where the more challenging pieces can meet and will likely require more conversation. And Donna, what else have I missed?
You covered it perfectly. I can't think of anything to add.
Thanks for the update, and yeah, please, please keep us posted. I'm sure this will certainly pick up steam in the new year. But looking forward to addressing this, because we're only seeing more and more districts that are looking to make changes to their configurations or withdraw completely, and it is a bit like the Wild West out there right now. So.
Jennifer?
Oh, yes, Jennifer, yes.
Can you remind me, what is the timeline on this?
At least, in talking to Chair Webb, they imagined that this would be something that they will do as a committee bill, and that Jim and Donna are working on some draft language now. And then these pieces could be taken up, and I think Chair Webb was going to sort of think about tactical measures and whether they come up together in parallel or one before the other. So I would imagine that's going to happen early in the session. She indicated that they've heard loudly and clearly from districts that can't take one more initiative. This is really not that, and I think that that's important to acknowledge. And I think she's clear, quite clear, that that is not what this is. This is rather a long-needed technical update, and for the most part. And then the other portion of it is, I think, trying to bring into alignment a thoughtful process that was required in unifying, to think about what that looks like if and when and how we clarify the law that talks about how districts can dissolve or cede from their unified arrangement. So there is hope that this sees completion in the session. It sounds quite likely this goes first or early, given that which she, she didn't mention other things, Donna, that I heard, that we're pressing for immediate action, so I think it'll be early.
And I would just add that, in general, a committee bill has a much more generous timeframe than a bill that's introduced by an individual. So that's part of the reason that it is going in this way, because we didn't have to adhere to the deadlines.
Thank you.
Yes. All righty. Thank you so much, Kim and Donna. So next on the agenda is item K, and there's, there are actually two, there's item K and then later on, item O. And per, you know, earlier conversations we've had, as well as the note I sent out to board members last night, you know, what I'm trying to do is establish more of a committee structure with the boards and delegate a lot of the work out to committees so that we can continue to enjoy a half-day meeting rather than an all-day meeting as a full board, which I hope you all can appreciate. So one thing that came to mind, we dealt with a group of independent school approvals over the summer, and it occurred to me at that point that it would be helpful to have a standing committee that can really vet these recommendations without the time constraints that we have with our regular board meetings. And, you know, I sort of, my vision is that we'll have a committee that can hear the presentation from the agency, can have representatives from the schools in attendance and available to answer more probing questions and go into greater depth than our time in our regular board meetings allows. So that's kind of the vision for establishing this committee under item K. So with that, I would entertain a motion to establish that committee with authority to appoint members. So, Jennifer?
Thank you. I move that the State Board of Education establish a standing independent school approval committee that will review the Agency of Education's recommendations for independent school approvals, seek additional information as necessary from any school seeking approval, and bring fully-vetted recommendations to the full board to formally accept or reject an independent school's request for approval. Should I further move? Should we vote on that, and then I'll continue?
Yeah, let's take care of this one. So all, so it's been moved, is there a second? Okay. Seconded by Patrick Brown. Is there any discussion? All righty. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of adopting the motion as read, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and say no. Are there any abstentions? The motion appears to carry unanimously. The motion has carried unanimously. You've adopted the motion and you've created the committee. So now, Jennifer?
All right. I further move that the State Board of Education authorize its chair to appoint members to the independent school approval committee.
Okay, the motion's been made. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Dr. Colby. Is there any discussion? All righty. Not hearing any. All those in favor of adopting the motion, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Okay. And those opposed, please say no and raise your hand. Are there any abstentions? All righty, the motion appears to carry unanimously. The motion has carried unanimously. You've adopted the motion. So with that, the chair is going to appoint members, Brown, Lovett, and Jepson, to this newly-formed committee. My expectation is I want to give the committee some time to sort of get itself organized, establish some norms before it begins to consider any approvals. And my expectation, back to my earlier comment, is I really would like to see the 2,200 rules come into effect before we take up any new requests for approval. Because there are some really important provisions that pertain to the civil rights of our students and their health and safety that I would like to see as part of the approval process moving forward. So anyway, that's it on that front. Next. Next, we talked earlier on, we've made a slight amendment to the agenda and added a topic to discuss the situation with the Rutland City School Board. So let's, I'd like to spend a few minutes to talk about that. Mr. Jepson, do you want to get us started off?
Thank you. I want to actually start by suggesting to Gabrielle and Anhaleta that it pains me to hear some of the stuff that you talk about that's happening in schools. But we need to hear that. So thank you for bringing all that forward. And I include Gabriella and Anhaleta in the next comment, which I think as, as the adults in the room, we, we need to step up whenever we can. And I don't know what the thoughts are on the remainder of the board here about making comments about activities at a, at a school board level. So I don't know if I should step back and suggest this is public comment as opposed to a state board member, but I'll be corrected, I'm sure, as I, as I make a statement here. Because I'm, I was deeply disappointed and embarrassed for our community at last evening's Rutland City School Board meeting. I'm embarrassed for our community and for our students that important work is being left undone and work that will support Rutland City's school, students and teachers. Work appears to have been delayed from what happened last evening on topics that will influence the quality of education that we've grown to expect in our community. And those topics included work that has now been tabled on health and safety for COVID response, the budget, a statement on inclusion, employee contracts. And most significantly to me was recognition and celebration of student accomplishments. And there were students in the audience that were unable to, to speak last evening. All of that's been tabled, in my opinion, by the inability of the school board to effectively operate at the moment. So I don't know if there is a way for the state board, or if we even want to get into this, to call upon the board and administration to move forward expeditiously to return to the important work required of them. And without delay, specifically to return to appropriate decorum that will model the behavior we expect of our local representatives. Our students are watching and they need our support right now. And so I was not at the meeting, I need to say that right up front. What I'm responding to is what I have read in the local newspaper and what I saw on WCIX TV. And I'm extremely disappointed. So I don't know what the state board's role can or should be when we see adults not moving quality forward in schools. But I bring that up for discussion and your direction.
Thank you, Lyle. I also read an account of the meeting in the Rutland Herald last night. I, I watched the clip on Channel 3 as well. And like you, I was not at the meeting, but I do periodically watch school board meetings from around the state after the fact. And I have watched some of, some prior meetings of the school board. And just without watching last night's meeting, just the, some of the prior meetings, one in particular, I can recall. I was, even that meeting, I was deeply disturbed by what I saw. And I, I think we have a leadership responsibility here to stand up. And if nothing else, the thing that I find really disturbing is the impact on the students. And this gets back, and I appreciate you bringing up, you know, Gabrielle and Anhaleta's comments earlier and what they're experiencing in schools. And we really need the adults to model appropriate behavior. And I was really disturbed to read that there were middle school students who were at the school board meeting to be recognized for their accomplishments. And they were unable to do so because of the school board's inability to function at, at the most basic level. One suggestion I had was I would actually would be interested in the board's thoughts on convening a special meeting for the specific purpose of hearing from those students and giving them the opportunity to get the recognition that they deserve. Jennifer.
Well, thank you. And I confess, I've not read the Rutland Herald. Can you briefly explain what happened? I mean, I'm getting a sense of it, but before we have like a substantive conversation, I thought some background might be helpful.
Lyle, do you want to take that one?
There has been a controversy around naming of a mascot in the community. And it was on the agenda and it became, the meeting devolved into a argument over how the agenda should be handled. And this is my interpretation, and it may not be entirely accurate. It devolved into adults not respecting one another at the table, not modeling appropriate behavior, behavior at the table in front of students and staff. So it ended, the meeting ended. There was no meeting. And the, the chair adjourned the meeting to a future date in January. And there is unleft business. For example, you know, my penchant for loving career in tech ed, they were going to set the Stafford Tech budget last night and were unable to do that, which affects every high school in the county and their ability to set budgets. So it is inappropriate, in my opinion, to not take up the work that is on the agenda because others are, are waiting for that. And that was probably the least of the important things. There are teacher contracts out there that are haven't, they haven't finished. The students in the audience, as Oliver was describing, they were going to talk about COVID relief and how they're working in the schools with Dan's help. So the meeting ended rather abruptly with many, many people in the audience. And it was, to me, the behavior of the adults that was most difficult to watch. And we, they need to get back to the business that they were elected to do.
And on the behavior, the clip that I saw on Channel 3 had school board members pointing fingers and screaming at each other. Kim.
I am sad to say that I wish this were isolated, but I think this isn't the first we're seeing of this this year. And I think it is the national rhetoric coming home in our local communities and that in, in bodies that used to be the nonpartisan, you know, deeply committed to public education caretakers, if you will. And I think not having watched this particular meeting, I don't know what we can do, but I would wish that we could do something that calls this to attention. I'm glad you're sharing it, Lyle. And I don't know what our authority is, except to be clear that this is unacceptable. Yet these are elected officials. And knowing from my own experience, there become challenges in what you can do in those situations. There, there are policies and yet those can be stomped all over. People can march around the state, you know, carrying their title and, and engage in political behavior that wouldn't be what we expect or used to expect when we elected our officials. So I would, I guess, encourage us to do whatever we can to highlight the wrong. Maybe, Dan, you know, if there is anything we can actually do.
So, so I think there, there are two things I want to sort of bring some focus to here. First is Lyle, I think, really thoughtfully expressed some words that I certainly share. And I, I think that could be memorialized in, in the form of a, of a letter from, from this board. I think it's, it's important to sort of set the, set the tone for, you know, what the general public should expect from, you know, leaders in, in education. And then the second thing I'd like to get, so I'd like to get a sense of the board's position on that. And then the, the second one is, I, again, I return to the students because for me, it's, it's all about the kids. And I feel like these kids were cheated out of an opportunity to have their moment. And, and I want to make sure that they have that moment. And so I'd like to see if there's interest in convening a special meeting for the explicit purpose of, of hearing from those students. So on the first, thoughts on having Lyle prepare a letter reflecting his earlier comments?
If I, if I may all.
Jennifer and then Tammy.
I'm sorry, if I may, I think Kim had asked for Dan's input on this. And I don't interrupt her. So I'm curious for Dan's reflections on this as well. So before we, is that okay?
Yes.
Dan, I'd be interested in hearing your thoughts.
Yeah, I, I am not up to speed on what happened last night. I was reading the media coverage as you were discussing it. So I, you know, unfortunately, I would agree with Kim, this is a bit of a pattern. And I think also it's, it's hard for me not to reflect on my experience, especially since I see the BRCU members queuing up for the next agenda item. You know, I've spent a lot of time in board meetings over the years and, you know, they're, I agree with the general characterization for the most part. You know, these are folks that are the caretakers of the system and really do their best. It's a complex system, but it's a very fragile system, I guess, would be my observation. And it's one of the reasons in our conversations around quality standards, I think, as a state that particularly prides itself on this delegational local control is an element of strength of our system, that we should have some standards on what does it mean to govern our local school districts? And especially since it's been reaffirmed repeatedly now that the state has the fundamental responsibility for education. That I think when the state delegates authority to local boards, the state should have some assurance that the boards are fulfilling their responsibility. And, you know, the issues, you know, related to the students, you know, the students learn these behaviors someplace and they're generally learning them from the adults that they watch on a regular basis. And we have our work to do as a society. But I think, you know, the governance piece in particular is one that we should focus in on as a state and take responsibility. I, I think in balance, it is a strength of our system, this delegation of local authority. But we need to have some, some rules of the road on that. And when, when students start to suffer, to Oliver's point, in this case, you know, clearly the students have a disadvantage and the students have learned something from this experience, then that should get our attention. And I would just offer, you know, if there's some role I can play. I know Oliver's suggesting the board might want to have a special meeting. But I'm, if it's more expeditious, I'm happy to go in person and to acknowledge the students at the school. That, that might be something I could do. So I'm happy to play any role you'd find useful.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Yeah, um, I mean, I think it would be helpful for, you know, if Lyle wants to draft the letter, I would be in support of that. The other thing that occurs to me is I, and I'm hazy on this and I apologize, but I know that school board members can be sanctioned. And I'm not sure what the process is, but I don't think we're the body to do it. But it might be helpful to include that information in the letter as an FYI.
Kim.
I think as I understand it, there's a formal complaint process and it can ultimately result in a censure. And that, not so much a sanction, there's really not a lot that comes out of that. It is a very onerous process in terms of consuming time and legal resources for what is unfortunately not a lot of recourse ultimately in behavior. So I think, I don't, I don't know the specifics of this dynamic. I don't envy the responsibility of the chair in managing this. And I don't know if that, you know, I truly don't know the players in the situation there. It seems they, it seems unlikely that their policies would allow for that, which I'm reading in the coverage right now. So the challenge is reminding, I think, boards in how they can lead with compassion and discipline to their policies so that they can do the important work. Because part of the strategy and the tactics and being employed in all of these situations is absolutely to distract and delay and defer and not get any of the actual work done. So I, it sounds, at least in what I had read, that the notion of changing the, I think South Burlington had gone through this, changing the mascot, remains politicized. And I'm not certain what those students were bringing forward. I don't know what that was to have been, but it looks as though they may not have gotten to ratifying the teacher contracts. Like, it strikes me that there's a good body of work that didn't happen in that meeting. And I wonder if the students were intending to speak about the mascot. I don't really know, and I don't know where we land in those situations. But I, it's unfortunate. I wish there were more in law that allowed for recourse for behavior that isn't what should be expected of elected officials.
Yeah, the, the students, it was a present, these were students who had been in a writing competition, middle school students. So it was really, it was an opportunity for them to be recognized for, for their, their accomplishments. Patrick and then Jenna.
Thanks, Chair Olson. So my, I do wholeheartedly support you doing a letter. But my question is, how can these folks be in leadership when they're not modeling with integrity? There is such a thing as civil discourse. And the leaders, especially school board, should be able to have civil discourse and be a model for the young folks, for the students. These are, this is the next generation and we need to prepare them. And what is happening in this district is not preparing our young people. And remember, in the previous presentation by Burlington School District, they emphasized over and over again empowering students. It seemed like in the Rutland School District, this is completely lost. The students aren't being guided, haven't, aren't being given the tools that they need to become respectable young men and women of the future. So I strongly, wholeheartedly agree with you doing the letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenna.
Thanks. I'd be kind of curious to see what the Vermont School Boards Association would like to lend, you know, what would be helpful for them? And maybe the interface between our board and what they think could be helpful in our role. And I think that this isn't, and it's unfortunate that it happened last night, but it is not out of character that's happening on boards. I'm, I have a front page paper here in the Northeast Kingdom that says that a board chair Monday said that a student can bring harassment upon herself by what she wears. So, and I also sit very closely to Danville that had a mascot change, rightfully so, but many, many meetings and inappropriate behavior that went in to that process as well. So I'm not opposed to responding, as Lyle said. I just wonder what the role would be moving forward with consistency and what will be our position and how will that be supported by the Vermont School Board Association?
Tammy.
Thank you, Jen. And I just wanted to say that I endorse the idea of sending a letter. And also, Jen, I think your, your suggestion about reaching out to the School Boards Association is, is a helpful one. We want to be supportive of that organization. But I do also want to circle back to Dan's reflection around governance. And, you know, we have a short, we have this immediate issue that we need to attend to, but we're all sort of talking about the fact that this is a recurring problem. And I do wonder whether or not we need to keep our eye on the ball longer term for how we can think about strengthening, perhaps through the EQS process, governance policies and practices for school boards that can then provide, find a framework that we can use as a state board, that the AOE can use, et cetera, et cetera, so that we can start to deal with these issues in a systematic, productive way. And I think that also is modeling. And I think that also is modeling good behavior for students, which is when we have problems, how do we make systems change? So I'd like to see the short term response. I agree with that. But I also want to keep our eye on the on the ball for a longer term, which is we may not have the authority or we may not be able to do something more explicit now. But we need to start to think about this because this is an issue that keeps coming up. And I think to Kim's point, it's going to continue coming up.
So Tom and then like to talk about how we move forward here.
Yeah, I just I want to support both what Jenna and Tammy have said, that this is a bigger issue and that there have been other meetings earlier this year that this board did not address, that were along these lines. And I'm confident that if anywhere to arise after this, that we would respond to them in the same way. But I think to start to solve the problem, we need to take the bigger picture. And whether it's through EQS or through Dan's leadership, there's there's a bigger issue here that this board maybe doesn't have the authority to address right now. But it does need to be addressed. I just and I wanted to go on record saying that I hope that if there are other instances like this one, that the board will respond in the same way.
Yeah, I totally agree. So so how about this as a proposal?
Can I jump in just one second?
Yes.
I know time is of the essence. I thank you all for your comments and I too am bringing it up because of the unintended consequences that could come from this, where we will be asked to make public comments on incidents that take place. And so we just need to be careful of our capacity to do that. And who will then speak for the board so that we have a big one voice, a common voice, and that we're being consistent, as Tom and all of you have just said. I think time, the time is now to act and to have a plan to do so. So thank you for listening.
So let me let me propose this as a path forward. I I would like to call a special meeting. I do want to provide these students with the recognition they deserve. But I think we could actually use a special meeting to accomplish that purpose, but also to start to have a larger conversation about the set of issues. So this 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 particular incident last night, and there have been others, as you have all mentioned, but this one, I think, is really the catalyst to say, okay, enough is enough. Like, we really need to step in here and establish and start a dialogue, right? A statewide dialogue. And I think a special meeting dedicated to that might be the right approach. So maybe we hold back on sending a letter now, gives us all time to kind of reflect upon not only what happened last night, but some of these other meetings. And let's bring forward a discussion at a special meeting convened for the specific purpose. And I think by opening the meeting, by inviting these students who who should have been recognized and honored for their efforts last night, give them that opportunity to do that. And I think that helps center the discussion around what's really important here, which is the kids. And so anyway, that's that's my proposal. Any any sort of opposition to that as a way to move us forward here? Folks support that?
Yeah, I would support that. I'd only add, I liked Jenna's idea of reaching out to the SBA to be part of this dialogue.
Yep.
I was just gonna offer too, if there's anything. This is near and dear to my heart and experiences recently. So if there's anything I can do to help raise on the the conversation, certainly I'm happy to help with that, Oliver. I think it's a great idea. I think it's if even if it's only what we can do is to convene. But I'm wondering too, if there's any place in the work on Chapter 11 that there's space for more rigorous expectations.
So let's let's start the conversation in this this meeting. So while I think I'm hearing general sort of support for this amongst the board. So I'll I'll work to get that scheduled. And and I want to get that scheduled sooner.
Also, and also reaching out to the school.
Yep, absolutely. Wonderful. All righty, so we're a little bit behind schedule. I'm going to propose that we take a five minute break. We could probably all use a break and I apologies to my friends here at the Taconic and Green. If you wouldn't mind giving us five minutes and then we'll we'll pick up at 10:40 sharp. All righty, I think we have a quorum, so we will restart our meeting here. So I we're now on Agenda Item L, which is to hear from the Taconic and Green Regional School District. In full disclosure, I'm the moderator of of the district. So I am familiar with with the district. But we, as a board, had have previously talked about hearing from districts around the state on their experiences with unification. And we're sort of kicking, this is going to be the first of a series. But Taconic and Green came to mind, not only because it's one that I'm very familiar with, but also because they were recently awarded or they were presented with an award by the School Boards Association for for good governance, which is a good segue from our last discussion. So with that, I'm going to introduce our presenters. So Herb Ogden, who is the the Chair of the Taconic and Green District. John Wilson was the Chair of the Study Committee that that brought this district into being. And Randy Lowe, who is the superintendent. So welcome, and the three of you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'm Herb Ogden and I'll begin by just thanking you for inviting us and inviting you to ask us questions as we go along rather than holding them all for the end. Randy, we'll we'll do some screen sharing with some slides here. So let's have the first one, Randy, if we could.
Actually Suzanne is going to share. Are you all set, Suzanne?
I'm gonna pull that up right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can go on to the second one now that we know what we're talking about here. And I apologize for the small print here, but we're putting this up just to show that this particular Act 46 merger involved towns that were really, in many ways, quite different from each other. If you look at the first line total population, you go all the way from Land Grove with 158 to Manchester with 4,300 and some odd. Percent of population under five, even there, there's a significant variance. Look at Land Grove, about 1%. Sunderland, about 6%. Next thing I'd like to call your attention to is the fourth line from the bottom, high school or higher. We have Land Grove with 100% versus Mount Tabor, my own town, with only about 81%. Then you look at BA or higher. You go from a low of roughly 21% in Danby, which is next door to me, to 60 some odd percent in Land Grove. Median family incomes also have a huge variation. You have Land Grove on the top with over 79,000. You have Manchester down at the bottom with about 45,000. And finally, the individuals below the poverty level, you've got a low of 2.5% in Dorset versus a high of 25.5% in my own town of Mount Tabor. Could I have the next slide, please?
I'm surprised Danby is so low. And I'm as somebody who grew up in Danby, I would have expected that number to be much higher.
So low in the BA or higher, you mean?
No, below the poverty level.
Oh. Well, I began as Chair of the Board that served that served Danby and Mount Tabor. And going back to at least, I think, 2005, when I got on that board, I think both Danby and Mount Tabor have been pretty low income. I don't know how that changed. Danby in particular has a problem with a huge gap between the really expensive, sometimes seasonal properties and a lot of the a lot of the pretty substandard housing a lot of folks have. Okay, next, yeah. And here are the schools, considerable variation in the enrollment. And note also that some of our schools don't go all the way through eighth grade and none of them go above eighth grade, which makes us unusual like places like St. Johnsbury. It also may, however, have contributed something to unity because most of our high schoolers go to Burnburn Academy in Manchester. And this has been historically true. And maybe that's made people identify a little bit more with each other. Next slide, please. I want to call your attention to the governance structure here. It says nine members each residing in one of the nine towns. There's a big difference between being a representative of a town and a representative from a town. We are all elected at large. And that, I think, has contributed to a board that hasn't spent a lot of time saying, well, the kids from X town are being treated better than the kids from Y town. Or I'm from X town, how come the following ours isn't happening for the kids from my town? It was also constitutionally necessary because we have such a variation on population that if we simply had representatives from each town, at best, some would have a quarter of a vote, others would have several votes. But it's, I think, a somewhat unusual setup. And if anybody has any, it looks like Jennifer Samuelson has a question.
Well, I was just gonna chime in. I remember, because full disclosure, I live in Win Hall, which is supervised by the BRSU. So I'm somewhat familiar with the TNG merger process. But I remember reading along the lines, and I forget now who, but someone coined the phrase, all our kids are all our kids. And I think that was a really, really good way to frame it, to really sort of expand the pie so that everyone was working for a common purpose. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. And at this point, I think I should turn it over to John Wilson, who was the Chair of the Merger Study Committee.
Thanks, Herb. My name is John Wilson. Yes, I was the Chair of the merger subcommittee. And I apologize if there's any background noise. I'm actually a high school teacher at Burnburn, too. And so I might have some kids coming in here, but I've locked the door. So hopefully we're okay. So, yeah, I was I was the Chair of the merger committee. And before then, I was the Chair of the Manchester School Board. And under the supervision of Secretary French, who also after during merger, he was actually the consultant and was replaced by my mother, Jackie Wilson, who some of you know. And and just thinking, you know, thinking, reflecting back from, you know, the Manchester School Board to the TNG Board and, you know, when I came on to the Manchester School Board, how there was, it was a tough board when I came on. And and, you know, there's, you know, there's efforts by some to, you know, to privatize and to and I grew up in Manchester and I went to the local school, I went K through 12, you know, K through eight in Manchester, and then went to Burnburn myself, where I currently teach. And so there was a lot of you know, reflecting back to that time, you know, just comparing where we were to where we are now in the board under Herb's leadership. And which I'm a part of as well, too, is it's a nice contrast. But it took a lot of work to get there and.
Sorry to interrupt. Suzanne, could you move to the next slide? Thank you.
And the yeah, it took a lot of work to get there. And, you know, we had great leadership and, you know, we can see the timeline here. And one of the biggest challenges, you know, all our, we had 17 members on the merger study committee, you know, I think all our votes were unanimous and but even though it's unanimous, the biggest challenge we had was determining representation amongst these towns of different sizes, which Herb alluded to. Yeah, but we, you know, it was a great board that worked really hard to be transparent and to over communicate. And and I felt my job in, you know, these towns are were towns that, you know, I had friends in all of them growing up and I, you know, I had knowledge of all of them. And I felt my job as the as the board chair, the merger committee chair, was to remind people of the social trust that already existed. And, you know, using that trust as, you know, as a lever to then go to the next step to say, you know, you know, we trust each other and we have to set aside these arbitrary boundaries, remind each other that all our kids are all our kids. And that became our unofficial motto. And something I always have felt strongly about, you know, the book Our Kids by Robert Putnam is one that has really influenced me as educator. But that aside, I would say that, you know, we had good media presence. We had a lot of community forums. And if you can go to the next slide, please. And I think, you know, my personal opinion is that Act 46 was well-designed legislation in its in its four goals, which are shown on this slide here. And these four goals, you know, that really helped orient us and remind, you know, we still come back to these. And that first one, equity, you know, we always see that is, you know, Randy will talk about this later. But, you know, equity is a challenge when you don't have trust between communities. But again, you know, reminding each other that, you know, a lot of, as Herb said, people in these communities went to, most of them send their kids to Burnburn. You know, they do youth sports together, you know, go to church, go to, they're on regional boards. So there's already these are, you know, if an anthropologist were to walk in, they'd see all and look over these communities, they would see existing structures in place that helped strengthen this trust. And so we were able to leverage those. And, yeah, it just kept coming back to, and this has still been our unofficial motto, that, you know, that we're equity is an ideal, we're going to keep striving for it. And but our our long, you know, just a reminder that are to keep us going is that all our kids, all are all our kids. And I don't want to go on too long. I'm sure you might have questions, but we can, if you have any questions, we're gonna keep going.
Keep going.
All right. I think, Randy, are you you up?
No, Herb. And you can advance the next slide.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I can't emphasize too much how important the work of the committee that John was chairing, I think, was to the success of the merger. In particular, all the all the contacts with the public. You would have had to have been hiding under a rock not to know something about what was going on. Okay, so what was the result? Let me talk first about the the second bullet here. The merger replaced seven school boards with one school board. And the merger study report said, a single board will allow the district's leadership to better focus on continuous organizational improvement and create a better framework to create to ensure equity of opportunity for all students. We believe that happened, but there hasn't been much progress toward one of the possible changes, which was a regional middle school. I think for for two reasons. One is it's a difficult not to crack in something that's as geographically spread out as we are. And then COVID came along and that distracted us. The merger wasn't expected to generate significant savings in the near term because mostly under two superintendents ago, namely your Secretary of Education, there had already been a lot of centralization done through the supervisory union. So there wasn't a lot of inefficiencies inefficiency for the administrative operation to sweat out. However, if there hadn't been a merger, we think that the expenses would have risen significantly more than they have since the merger. The merger created one employer for all personnel except those shared through the SU. And this gave the new district greater flexibility in adjusting staffing based on evolving student. student needs and changing economics. The merger study report included, as its very first goal, equity in the quality of educational opportunities, and John alluded to this. We looked over our progress toward this goal, and we were fairly satisfied. We had a single board with a unified vision, that created an ends policy to govern all students. We did this. We created the option to move students among schools operated by the district. That relates to the fourth bullet here. We did this to some extent, and we were still establishing, exploring establishing a regional middle school. We got a more equitable approach to pre-kindergarten. A merger, merged district, we thought, could ensure greater access to arts and music curricula. I don't think this has happened yet to any great extent, something to work on. It could allow for expansion of after-school programming by creating regional sites among district-operated schools. Again, progress needed. Enhance the ability of district leaders and teachers to work together. Yes, done, and we expect further progress. And finally, one of the goals was to preserve high school choice in order to provide education quality and variety to all students in nine through 12. This was important because all the towns had had nine through 12 choice before, and we did it. I want to talk a little bit about the third bullet here, transition to policy governance. I think this was pretty important to the success of the board after the merger for a couple of reasons. One is that it, it freed up the administration from having to deal with things like a board that basically wants to know what their principals and the superintendent had for breakfast yesterday. It also lets the board focus on policy and also on dealing with possible state legislation. I know that the board, the little board I began by chairing seldom had any opportunity to do that, partly because we were a board that ran one little bitty school, and we didn't think anybody was going to pay much attention anyway. I think that our greatest achievement was bringing the diverse towns together with this motto of "All our kids are all our kids," and that mostly thanks to the leadership of the merger study committee. The members got to know each other and trusted one another. And the first school board that resulted from that had a fairly heavy representation from the merger study committee. And the, I guess, two-thirds of the leadership of the board is still people who are on that committee. Let's have the next slide. So here are some of the challenges I did allude to. The first bullet, we're not there yet, but we have a better opportunity of getting there. The second bullet has been easier to do because now the TNG is the employer of all, of all the teachers, except the one shared with the supervisory union. Three, I would suggest, is very important for any school board, but particularly one that uses the Carver model of policy governance, because new board members have to understand why our policies are written the way they are, and, and basically understand the idea that we set the goals, we give the superintendent some guidance about how a superintendent can or cannot reach the goals, but we don't tell the superintendent how to get to most of them. It's a bit like saying, okay, I want you to get this shipment to Rangoon by next, next month. I don't care how you get it there, just get it there. We were hoping that the merger was going to remedy the shortage of board candidates. It hasn't really. There have been a couple of elections where we were, we were, simply didn't have a candidate for a position and had to resort to run to write-ins. Luckily, we were able to attract good write-in candidates. And I think Randy, our superintendent, may speak to this last bullet some. There's one more slide for my talking here. You have the next slide, please. Post-merger suggestions. I mentioned policy governance orientation. I didn't mention the, the next two. The SBA participation by at least some of the leadership is a very helpful idea. You understand what problems other districts have, then maybe you don't, and you feel good about that. On the other hand, you also realize that there are things to be learned from other places. The next bullet, we found, is, is pretty important. What I try to do as chair is go over two hours only if everybody agrees that that's what we're going to do. We've been working a lot on the next to last bullet. Being fairly new to policy governance, we've, we're just finishing up on that. And the very last one is certainly very important. Not that obviously you can self-perpetuate, but it's, it's really good to keep reaching out to folks who might be interested in being on the board and encouraging them to run. And I think that does it for my part of the presentation. Pass it off to Randy, but if anybody has any questions, we'll take those first, I guess.
All right. So can we just advance to the next slide, please? So I'm Randy Lowe. I'm the superintendent for the Bennington Rutland Supervisory Union, and I have the privilege of working with Chair Ogden and with, with John Wilson on the board. And frankly, the rest of the Taconic and Green Board is pretty exceptional. And I've only been the superintendent at the BRSU for two years, so last year and this year, which, you know, creates its own unique opportunities with COVID. And I was in the system before that, so I'm familiar with the BRSU. This is my ninth year in the, in the supervisory union. I was, you know, I'm going to kind of talk about some of these points that I have listed here, but I feel compelled, after listening to the conversation before our presentation, to comment on sort of my immediate reflections, because I think about our board, and what are some of those structures and systems that are in place that offer a level of governance to effectively operate? I don't know where, is this coming from me? Is echo?
Yeah, there, yeah.
Okay. It's not on my end, though. It's another caller?
Yeah, there's a caller just left.
Okay. So, so, first of all, you've heard the, the commitment, you know, hearing, hearing somebody not within the district identify that, hey, Taconic and Green talked about this idea of "All our kids are all our kids." It, it's, it really is within our community. It's something that people talk about, and I think that went a long way to bringing this board together. And people shared a collective commitment to that out of the gate. One of the, the structure of policy governance is certainly not going to be a structure that some board members would appreciate, but I think it was really, really beneficial for Taconic and Green post-merger. Because the governance style, as, as Herb alluded to, keeps a distance from the day-to-day operations of the district. So, so you're operating within a pretty structured governance style that is predictable and has, has the strongest structure I've ever seen in a, in a governance model. So when we have strong, effective facilitation of meetings that sticks to that structure, it allows the board to do their work. And it also does not allow personal interest items or passion items from any, either member of the public or board member to derail the work of the board. And I think that that, that, from my perspective as superintendent, is a really important facet of the work that they're doing, and a huge part of how I believe Taconic and Green has accomplished what they've accomplished since the time that they organized as a board. So, you know, as we were preparing for this, I don't remember whether it was Herb or John who said, you know, questions with the idea of pandemic response, and I hadn't even given that a thought, that they raised the question of, can you imagine leading through this with, with seven different districts and having to navigate this pandemic, responding to every single one of those districts? And, you know, you recognize the efficiencies of a merger when you're thinking about, really, we had 12, 12 boards pre-Act 46. I, I honestly don't know how I ever would have navigated that. So that is certainly a benefit when you think about something of a, the magnitude of a pandemic that you're trying to lead through. As I said, I think that somebody alluded to this, the idea of district staffing, you know, all of a sudden, we have the ability for staff to have the ability to move between schools, and for us to be able to move, move people. And so when, when we, when there are reductions in force, or when we're faced with needing to address staffing issues, we have much more flexibility. And while I think that there was some anxiety and nervousness out of the gate with our teachers, I think that they're really starting to see the benefits that can be afforded. You know, somebody may want to change grade levels, or maybe they've been in a school for a period of time, and they want to teach in a different school, a larger school, a smaller school, a different grade level. And now they have much greater flexibility to be professionally intellectually stimulated and challenged, but also stay within, within the district. And that, that's been a very nice benefit of the merger for us. This was talked about earlier, too, and I consider it frankly to be one of the most important aspects of our work, period, is trust. And, and as Herb alluded to, we go back to the merger study committee, John heading that up, having very, very strong, transparent communication, listening to people, respecting different opinions, taking the time to reach consensus, and to build, build the model as a team through all of those highs and lows, establish the level of trust that then set TNG up for success. Then TNG came in with, you know, with, with, again, a shared collective commitment to the work, to all of our kids, to effectively and successfully leading this much larger district, and that, that's really, that's really stayed. You know, we, we face the same challenges as a district, anybody else does. So it's not as if none of the challenges that are existing throughout our state and throughout our country right now, we are not insulated from that. They're right here. But I have said countless times, and I will close out kind of my, my comments with you, with the fact that I never would have made it through the last two years, having, kind of, I guess, with the success that I've had, and, and I don't say that in like a rah-rah kind of way, but I mean, I was a new superintendent in July of 2020. That, that is tough. And the TNG board has, I've said to them a number of times, you've been the wind in my sails. When, when I need a push, and when I need support, and I need a path cleared, and when the support needs to come out, they have been there to guide our work and guide my work. And, and I cannot imagine what I know many of our other colleagues are going through without the support of a solid unified board. So I am deeply appreciative of that. So I think, Suzanne, we've got one more slide, and I'll turn it over to Herb to kind of give some final comments.
Thank you, Randy. So just to sum up, we had a really good formative process, and particularly if you're interested in making Act 46 work, I think that, that is the, the thing you really want to keep an eye on. I mean, sure, everybody has to have a merger study committee, but I, I think probably the quality of committees and the quality of committee leadership can vary a lot. Then, we adopted policy governance, and we also have been pretty strict about monitoring our progress, another really important item. We've been lucky that we've had personalities on our 13-member board, actually 15-member, because we have two student non-voting members, that personalities have managed to work together well. And finally, we've been very lucky that we have a capable and competent staff. And that's where I will leave it, and hopefully see if there's any questions for any of us.
So I'd, I'd love to hear your, your perspective, Herb, or Randy, or John, on sort of this, this dynamic between, you know, small communities and large communities. As you may know, we as a board have been, have been faced with at least one instance of a district that's going through some process of, of reorganization, and a lot of that has come about over some stress around the, the small-town, large-town dynamic. And, and ultimately, you know, there were some concerns about potential school closure, not even a school closure, but potential school closure. And I'm just, I'm curious how, what lessons you would have for, for other boards that are similarly structured as you guys are, but, but seem to have some real challenges, so that you guys, I'd like to hear kind of how you've overcome those potential challenges.
Well, I'll kick off with two thoughts, and John may want to amplify the first one a little bit about how it got to be. Part of our merger agreement was that no school would be closed, I think, within the first four years, if I remember rightly. But I think also, the, the way our, our representation works has, has pretty much headed off any kind of a problem. I chair the board. I'm, I'm from the second smallest town in the whole nine, nine-town district. And when we, when we first began, vice-chair was from one of the smaller towns also. We, we can't, none of us can just rely on voters from our own town to put us into office. For example, I could get every single vote in the town of Mount Tabor, but because it's in a large election, I could easily not, not win the Mount Tabor seat. It might go to some other Mount Tabor resident. So we, we have to pay attention to what all of our constituents in all nine towns want to achieve. And I, I think that's one of the reasons why, as I alluded to before, you don't get people on the board level unreasonably asking for benefits for their particular town. I don't know, Randy or John, chime in on any of that?
I would just add to that, that I, I mean, I'm going to kind of highlight that last comment. Both the merger committee and TNG, a long time to create a culture in which you weren't having to fight for your town or fight for your school. There wasn't this need to advocate for your share. And taking the time to work through all of that, set the stage and the tone for a town that, I mean, a board that does not do that at all. I mean, Herb, Herb has been the chair of the board, and as he said, he's from the second smallest town. Nobody ever talks about their school, or their town, or their people, ever. I never hear that in meeting. And, but you've got to build that through the process of development. And I think if you don't do that, take that critical step, you will not be able to engage effectively as a board.
Yeah, thanks. Oh, John, go ahead.
And to add to that, yeah, I think we, we did well to kind of explain the his, you know, not get bogged down in the history, but, you know, how we used to have multiple districts and when, just in Manchester, and, you know, and then we merge around, around town boundaries, and, you know, kind of explain how arbitrary it really was in the past. But, but really, I think, you know, I'm not going to talk about that social trust piece anymore, because I think I made that pretty clear. But getting people's heads wrapped around that it doesn't have to be a zero-sum game, that just because, you know, it doesn't mean there's, there's a fixed pot and that work, but one community gets, they get more, it's going to take less, you know, it's emphasizing this message that, you know, we can be more efficient, and then we can serve all our kids better than in the past. So that was, you know, getting people, their heads out of that logical fallacy of zero-sum game was, you know, was hard work, but I think, you know, and it still is, but I, I think we're on the right path.
Excellent. Thank you. Tammy, and then Jennifer.
Thanks, Herbert, Randy, and John. And John, a shout-out. Our Kids is a great book. I have my students read that every year. It's an important book. I have a question, and I'm sorry if I missed it in the presentation, but on the board, do, does every town's, does every representative's vote have equal weight, or do you have a system whereby you have sort of a population-weighted voting system? For example, in my district, we have a situation where we have one town that has, membership has supermajority, and it creates these tensions. And I'm curious whether or not your board has a similar structure, or if, and if it does, how you've, how you've- does, how you've, how you've managed that? Because you know, we have, you know, culture is so important. I can't agree with you more, Randy, but you know, structure matters too. So I'm just curious to under, understand a little bit more around the structure. And I apologize if you addressed it and I missed it.
Well, we only obliquely addressed it. Each, each, um, we don't have weighted voting. We have nine towns, um, nine of, nine of the rep, of the board members have to live in each one of those nine towns. And then the way we account for the fact that some towns are much bigger than others is there's an additional four members and those four have to live in one of the four biggest towns. Everybody is elected at large though, all 13 of us. Does that answer the question?
That does, and that's really interesting. And I think there are lessons to be learned also from how just the voting structure on the board differs across these mergers and, and how that can either complement efforts around culture or run counter to efforts around culture. So I really appreciate you sort of helping me understand sort of the juxtaposition between the two in your district.
Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you all again for coming and sharing your, um, process with us. I think one of the things that really stood out to me is the amount of work that you put in pre-merger, you know, really creating that foundation and establishing the trust and you know, building this cohesive, um, entity, which I think has really laid the groundwork for so much of the success that you guys have. And so, I mean, I think that's fantastic. The question I have is unfortunately, I'm not sure that every district within the state that has merged, um, had the opportunity, took the opportunity to go through that same process. So, you know, and where we are now, do you have any, you know, tips or suggestions for other districts that might be struggling because they didn't have that buy-in before they, they merged?
Well, this would be a heavy for some of them, but I think at least looking at a policy governance model would help.
John?
I, I'm sorry, just wanted to make sure I understand the question. You, you mean, uh, districts that have not yet merged or are already merging and are struggling?
Yeah, districts that have merged but are struggling, like how?
They didn't have the benefit of going through quite as an extensive planning process that you guys went through.
Yeah, I misunderstood the question the first time, so I'll let Randy jump. I'll, I'll think about that for a second. I'll, maybe she has a better response.
I, I think the only thing you can do is acknowledge where you are and have a shared commitment to moving forward. I mean, I, it's the way it is with any, any organizational change in which you find yourself in the moment you're in, that, that at that moment, you need to come together and, and identify what is our shared purpose? What is our share vision, our mission, our, our goal? And, and, and figure it out from that moment to, to find a path forward. I'm not sure what else you can do. Be people, at, at least how I understand it, everyone had the opportunity, the time was provided and you know, different people find themselves obviously in the situation they're in for different reasons, but you gotta, you gotta, somebody's needs to, to take control of that and help that, uh, that board to find a path forward.
You know, harking back to something we were discussing maybe an hour and a half ago, it, it's a shame that the law doesn't require a merger dissolution study committee.
I have a quick question.
John?
Quick question. And I guess my, my question back is for these, uh, these districts that have merged and may be struggling, um, you know, how, how would you contrast them to our district? Were they, was there a familiarity, you know, a cultural familiarity that existed between them beforehand? Did they send their kids to the same high school? You know, I kind of think of it as like the bleacher test, you know, when you go to the youth basketball game, you know, are you on the same side? Are you sitting on the same side of bleachers or opposing sides? You know, I guess my question is on a more macro level, do you see any patterns where there's dysfunction on boards, um, that merge boards? And if there is any, you know, commonalities, you know, but did the, were there already these existing structures in place, uh, to build trust?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. And, um, you know, I, I think it's probably the, the answer is it's, it's all over the place, but you know, the one that, that comes to mind, I, I would say is very similar to your district in many ways, you know, just in terms of, uh, the, the type of geography and the, uh, the shared sense of history around a common high school, to your point, I think is, is a really important one. But you know, when the prospect of school closure comes up, that's, uh, that, that's where things can get really sticky and, uh, can, you know, depending on your representation model, uh, can, can unravel pretty quickly. And, um, yeah, so you know, it's interesting. I think you closed down one grade post-merger in one of the schools, if I'm not mistaken. And, and you know, and we have to wrap up, but I'm just, I'm curious your, that process, uh, because it was the sixth grade in Courier. You know, was there, was there opposition in the community to people come out and all of a sudden, you know, to best of my knowledge, there, I, I didn't really hear much about it or much opposition to it, but maybe I missed something.
Well, since I used to chair the Courier Board, I'll handle that one. I think there were a few people who didn't like it, but there was no public uproar or anything like that. I, I think a lot of other folks realized that, um, one of the problems of a small school can be that if a child is in a particular cohort and for whatever reason, they don't get along, uh, and they have to be in that same little cohort for K all the way through eight, let's say, that's not really good for anybody. And I, I think one of the reasons that folks were willing to let the sixth grade go basically to Manchester was that these kids have been together long enough in a small class.
I would, I would also add to that, that part, one of the catalysts, probably the biggest was that we had a pre-K program attached for the students at Courier and maybe they were offsite in a facility that was not, um, able, we couldn't continue. There were issues with that space. We, we, the decision was, do we just close the pre-K site? And, and we did not feel like that was the best thing for the children of Mount Tabor and in Danby. It's in, it's in a very remote spot on Route seven. We, and there was no other access to pre-K programming. So closing that was not in the best interest of the children in that community, but to move that, we didn't have room at the school. So in order for us to preserve pre-K, it meant something had to change at the school. All of the students for seventh and eighth grade were already going to be going to Manchester. So because of what the, the agreement was, um, through the, through the merger. So, so we had, we had the narrative that was logical, that was student centered, that made sense to then bump sixth grade. And I think the communication around that was pretty transparent. And while there was some level of concern, it was, it, it was understood and, and based on what was best for kids.
Oh, wonderful. Well, thank you all for, for this presentation. It was really, uh, great to hear from you. And as I mentioned before this, this is the first in what's going to become a series of, of hearing from districts around the state. So, and again, congratulations, uh, on your recent award.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Right, so that brings us, uh, to, and we're running a little bit, uh, behind schedule, so I apologize for that, but that brings us to our friends from Central Vermont Career Center, uh, Planning Committee. So speaking of, uh, planning committees, um, um, we, I'm trying to think what, um, I don't think anybody else on the board today was on the board through much of the, um, the merger activity we had with Act forty six. So I, I realize that what we're dealing with today is probably a new concept to, or an unfamiliar concept to, to many of you. But, but certainly not all of you. So anyway, uh, long story short, um, we have before us today, uh, a request, we have a statutory obligation, uh, to review, uh, consider and, uh, and hopefully approve, um, a proposal to create a, a, um, a, a regional Career Center District. So with that, I'm, uh, I'm going to ask, um, Donna, I think Donna, you might be the most appropriate person just to provide a, a quick overview of the process. And then I'll turn it over to, um, to Flore, uh, from the study committee and, and others to actually make their formal presentation.
Um, sure. And I will be very, very quick. Um, you, you've received the, um, the green sheet from the secretary about this and it lays out both the situation in the state and also the, the statutory requirements for creation of a CTE district. Most of the, um, CTEs in the state are governed by a host district and that host district, um, is board is the board that governs, um, the CTE center. There are three, um, CTE districts in the state. They are their own district and they are, um, they are governed by a group of, um, member districts, very much the same as a, uh, as in the UUSD mergers. Those three, uh, were created in the early to mid 2000s, uh, because of legislation that went into effect in, in 2001. This will be the first one that has come before you since 2007, I believe. Um, and so, uh, I, I, you know, I think that, I think that our green sheet, um, gave you a lot of information that I, that I don't feel like I should be repeating. And I think it's more important to turn over to the folks who want to present to you, but I'm happy to answer any questions if, if you have any.
Excellent. Thank you. So Flore, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for having us this morning. Good morning. Uh, we're really excited to be here. We have a very short presentation and we're hoping to divide our, our presentation in, in three sections. And I'm wondering if to get started, if we could share the screen?
Yes, please.
Yep. Okay. Do I need power to do that or? Thank you. There we are. So I, I think this would be easier. So we are going to try to break the presentation in, in three parts, like you guys had suggested. We're going to start with a presentation, then questions, and then an overview of what is happening now. So, uh, next slide. To, okay, let me. Jody, could you move to the next slide? Oh, there we are. So I first wanted to get a chance to some of the committee members that were able to join us today. You can see the names of everybody. Michael DeWes was our consultant and he is with us today on the phone. And I'm going to give him a chance to introduce himself quickly. Mike?
Good morning. Glad to be here. Thank you for considering this important matter.
Okay. We have Jody Emerson, who is kindly sharing her screen for me. Uh, our director, Jody?
So you won't see me since you're seeing my, uh, presentation, but I'm so happy to be here and this is my first year as director at Central Vermont Career Center. So this is an exciting opportunity for us to talk about.
And we have Jill Remick with us from Montpelier.
Hi, everybody. Good morning. Hi, Mr. Levitt, my former teacher and headmaster. My name is Jill Remick. I'm a member of the Montpelier Roxbury School Board. Uh, I am also the Director of Property Tax at the State of Vermont and, um, was at the Agency of Education before that. So lots of familiar faces. Thanks for having us.
And we have Clifton with us today too. Clifton?
I'm Clifton Long. I teach plug and heating in the tax center and I'm a member of the committee and we are very happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And I'm Flor Diaz Smith. I chaired this committee with the help of all my committee. It was a great teamwork and it's probably one of the best committees that I've ever been involved with. We, we really got a lot of work done in a very short period of time. Um, I am the Vice President of VSB A and I'm also the Chair of Washington Central. Yeah. So with that, let's move to the next slide. Jody? So the Central Vermont Career Center provides, uh, students from Cabot, Harwood, Montpelier, Spelling and Twinfield and U32, the opportunity to experience technical work and preparing for post-secondary careers in the following programs that you can see below. But I wanted to set the tone for this meeting, uh, just by saying, uh, you know, a few words. This pandemic has brought into focus the attention to children and education. The inequities in our society are now on every community's members' mind, food insecurity, limited mental health access, healthcare, homeless broadband, in community quality and who is essential. We should take advantage and do something to redesign and prioritize, I mean, good, and let that be the focus for the wellbeing of all our children, meeting the children's needs inside and outside of school and giving them multiple pathways to succeed in life. Career and technical education is usually an afterthought and we know now have been reminded that the past couple of years, that this is a critical part of high quality pre-K to 12 education. It should be an integral part of middle school and high school experience. And I know that you all agree with this, so don't. You've had the change of governments, of governance for the Central Vermont Career Center brings together heart and mind. And you will see it through the presentation. It also fulfills the five goals that you were just talking about in the previous presentation for the County Green. Equity, quality, efficiency, sustainability, transparency and accountability, and delivered to a cost that parents, voters and taxpayers value. Next slide. Clifton?
So we've been here for about 50 years and served the community very well. There are thousands of our graduates out working and we frequently get the sons and daughters of former graduates. We feel like we've been an integral part of the economy, um, here in Central Vermont.
So before we continue, I completely neglected to introduce, uh, Dr. Greggs is with us today too. Could you introduce yourself? Scott? Scott, can you hear me?
My PM mute, Scott?
Scott? Okay, we'll, we'll wait until he is back. Continue, Clifton, sorry.
I guess we're, go to the next slide. I think we're.
Well, it looks like Scott is just joining us now. He wasn't actually in the meeting.
Okay. Scott, can you hear us?
Hi, folks. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
We can.
We can.
Okay. So I, I was on the whole time. For some reason, my mic gave out at a strategic moment, but, uh, what, uh, I would just want to echo what others have said and we greatly appreciate your time, uh, this morning. This is sort of an, uh, exciting time for the Career Center and a, and a, a good opportunity. So again, we thank you for your consideration today.
Great.
Thank, thank you, Scott. So as you can see, the change of governance enables the citizens across the region to enjoy a more direct access and control over matters that affect directly, uh, the Central Vermont Career Center. And they can vote in the budget. Right now, we are just advisory. We would be installing a governing board representative in the entire region to represent the rights of citizens and isolate its responsibilities to control the, and the oversight of only Central Vermont Career Center as opposed to a whole district. And we're also positioned Central Vermont Career Center as a progressive and innovative school of choice, supported by future occupational demands to prepare Central Vermont Career Center graduates for local, state, national and global employment. Jill?
Great, thanks. So as you folks can imagine, we spent a, the vast majority of our time in our various meetings going through logistics and the governance of this board. I remember, I recall Dr. Colby's question a little while ago about, um, weighted votes versus, um, numeric votes. And we've determined that we would have 10 total members. Four would be at-large members from the larger districts and then the other six would be appointees from the six sending, um, school district boards. We also did agree that we would retain the Very Education Association bargaining agreement for the duration of that agreement. So we would be able to essentially continue on with the staff under the, um, existing, bargaining agreement that they're working under right now, so that there would be no surprises or disappointments there and keep that transition for the staff as seamless as possible. We did determine that member districts would be responsible for transporting the students to and from the district. Intra-district transportation would of course be the responsibility of the new district. And another important piece that, uh, that does make sort of a standalone technical center district separate from maybe center district separate from maybe being under an umbrella of another school district is that the member district would still serve as the LEA, the Local Education Agency, for the purposes of their students attending Central Vermont Career Center. So as you can imagine, that relates to federal funds, that relates to special education and other offerings.
So if approved by the AOE and the State Board of Education, our next steps will be to prepare 18 sending school towns to vote on March 1, 2022, to support our new governance structure. And if approved by the voters, then our transition board elected and appointed our members will be preparing for opening the new district in July 1, 2022. Clifton?
So running parallel and actually preceding the governance study process, we've been wondering how we can expand and serve more students. And this 350 applicants for 231 spaces is compelling evidence that we need to do that. I mean, our students leave here with absolutely excellent job and career prospects, and the fact that we're denying over 100 students that opportunity every year, and we think our applicant pool will probably increase, you know, means that we need to do something about that. And so we realized that this kind of disparity was coming, and we began investigating what we could do about it about five years ago. And we went through a visioning process with all of our teachers and other stakeholders, and we investigated whether or not we could renovate where we are and expand where we are on the Spalding campus. And we went through a lab design process and a preliminary center design process. And we've determined at this point that we really need a new tech center in order to serve the students. Right now, the maximum is 231, and we feel like we need to create 350 spaces at least. We have about 70,000 square feet where we are, and we want to double that to 144,000 square feet. Could we go to the next slide? So we, you know, we know that this would be extremely expensive to build a new center, but we feel like it's absolutely necessary for us at this point. And there are other stakeholders, the Department of Labor, other post-secondary training initiatives that could share in the space. We see this as kind of an employment hub for the Central Vermont area, and we have a preliminary cost estimate of $90 million. So once the governance vote passes, we're going to start to see where we can find funding for the center.
So on this note that you see on your screen, we're going to open it up for questions from the board.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So I know of at least two board members I'm sure will have questions. Lyle, Mr. Johnson?
Okay, I'll start. Bye, Scott. So I sent Flore 11th hour questions to you about specifically a couple things. I'm sure you've looked at River Valley and Patricia Hannafords and Southwest Vermont's enrollment trends before and since they became independent. And I'm sure you've looked at the cost comparison of being your own standalone center as opposed to having a host high school. And so my questions revolve around, I'm sure the quality, whatever you do will be quality, because I know the players there, you know, Cliff and Scott and others. But I worry about the equity and the cost. And so will there be more students actually coming, and will you be able to do that based on what those other three independents have found has happened since their merger? So I throw that out just as a, what did your study show as you were putting this together?
Yeah, so I'm going to pass this question to Scott and to Mike. But the email that you sent me, you said that this was, it was something that you had referred to the AOE. I don't have a comparison with me today of all of the different, of those different centers. But we do believe that we just looked at the budget on Monday, and we do believe that we could, with that budget, we could provide the needs for our schools, and it's not going to be changing the dollar amount right now into what our communities are going to be voting on. And the re-envisioning project is completely separate for us to this decision. So Mike, I'm wondering if you wouldn't mind sharing some of the history.
You know, Flor, I'm going to defer to Jody and Scott on that, just being closer to that structure.
So I know that those districts, most of the CTE centers have actually seen some declining enrollment over the last two years. They think mostly because of COVID and the inability to share what's going on in their centers and get students in there to take a look. We've had the opposite. We've been growing, and already we have our first round applications open, and we've already exceeded by 50 students at least how many applicants we've had in any past year. So we're already at the 230-plus mark for first-round applicants for our programs, which means, again, we're not going to meet the needs of students locally. We also have heard from lots of businesses that we're not necessarily meeting their needs yet either, and so there are lots of ways to expand. That doesn't fully answer your question. Scott Farr was a part of our committee and worked closely with us, and it sounds, based on his, my conversations with him, and again, this is my first year here, they have been able to provide what's needed for students for the most part until running into COVID. They do have some concerns around the inability for independent CTE centers to attain funding such as ESER funding, because that went to the other school districts and not to the independent CTE districts. And so are there ways to gain some of that funding to support the social-emotional needs of students in tech centers, for examples, that are their own independent district? So that gets to a little bit of it. I feel like we are going to be able to provide for the needs of our students because the CTE directors work so closely together. Like, the curriculum work that's done is done across the state. The work that we do in developing our teachers is statewide. So we are able to partner together despite the different districting that exists and to bring that for all of our teachers and all of our students. Scott Griggs, do you have anything to add?
You're on mute, Scott. You're still on mute. Yeah, I think your microphone gave out again. Sorry about that. We'll come back to you, Scott, and see if your mic works again. But in the meantime, Mr. Levitt, you have a question.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. And hi, Jill. Good to see you. My question is about program. And I know in the tech center here, not all programs are equally well-enrolled. And so I'm wondering if you are thinking of adding programs or changing programs, especially when you think about workforce development. And to that end, I didn't see anything about adult education or continuing education in the presentation, and if that will also be regionalized.
I think I'll probably just speak to that in saying that every year, we have to reevaluate and think about what programs are meeting the needs of our students and our community, which ones are under-enrolled or over-enrolled, or people want and don't want, for example, right now. And so we do have an eye to creating a new program. We've already created an advanced EMT program for next year. We're working with the Vermont Granite Museum and Norwich University around a design arts program, which would include some stone trades, some manufacturing, and some masonry-related fabrication, CNC. So those are exciting new programming. It doesn't involve governance. If we have a new governance, it might make it easier to assess what our entire region needs. But I see Scott's still working on that. Sorry.
I think his microphone works now.
Yeah. So there's programming changes that will happen if we're able to become our own center and access more space, then there are certainly new programs that we would like to build. As far as adult ed, I think Scott can speak to that more readily as he's a part of that already. But I know that we are providing LNA programming regularly. So one group starts, they finish, the next group starts. We anticipate that if we could expand our space and our offerings, we could also meet the needs of other businesses for adult ed. And if we had a new building, which I know is separate from the governance, that might be located in a place more centrally located for our region, and therefore the Central Vermont Medical Center, for example, could provide trainings. We could provide trainings for other businesses locally. So that's our hope that we can continue to grow for all sectors.
Great. And one follow-up that's along the same lines. I know that, at least here, middle school programming is somewhat challenging. And will your new district be able to do that more easily or efficiently?
I think having representatives from each of the school boards of our sending schools is a way that we can do that. Right now, they're on a regional advisory board, and they meet four times a year. Having those people part of our decision-making process monthly is going to change that. However, there's some state regulations around what we can and can't do, and what students we can have, that get in the way of that as well. So for instance, we can have 10th through 12th graders. To allow freshmen into any of our programs, even our exploratory program, we need permission per the regs. So there might be some needs for change in state law around CTE.
Great. Thank you. So Flor, I want to make sure we have a little bit of discussion and acknowledgement of the, not only the hard work that went into the study, but a lot of hard work that has just occurred over the past few days, literally over the past few days, I think, in terms of addressing a concern that some of the town clerks had raised around the voting mechanism. And I know one of the clerks, Carol, I believe, may still be with us. So Carol had reached out to me, I think, a week or so ago, indicating that she wanted to address the board during public comment. I had some follow-up conversation with Flore and Donna, and it sounds like there was some really great collaboration behind the scenes resulting in this addendum to the report. My understanding is that this addendum has resolved those concerns, and I just briefly want to hear from you, Flor, and if Carol, if you're still on the line, it'd be great to hear on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we had the board meet again on Monday to go over and just do a couple. You received that memo with a few things that we changed, and the most important one was just reaffirming that we, that it was the pleasure of the board understanding that the clerks do all of the work. And we had a really good conversation with Carol that of, you know, difficulties of bringing ballots from one place to another. But the consensus of the board was to commingle the ballots. And if anything changed, I know that the legislature has been looking at different ways of making this easier for unified districts. If that changed, she was going to send a letter to, you know, other town clerks and the legislature. We felt confident, you know, the vote was not unanimous, but it was just, it was pretty much unanimous. We just had one vote against. So it's a really, it's a really good outcome. I believe Carol, I invited Carol to come to that meeting. She was with us. We talked this morning. She's been listening since earlier than I been in this meeting this morning. So I think it's a work in progress. I believe that she understands our desire to not create more divisiveness, but that unified, and just what we've been talking about right now, about looking at all our kids together is going to make it easier for programming, for opportunities for all kids, and at the same time, to bring the communities together and not point fingers and who is voting yes or voting no for a budget. It would be our responsibility to inform our, you know, our 18 towns. Granted, some of those towns are really small, but it's nothing different to the six districts that are already part of this. So I don't want to speak for Carol either, but...
I'll invite her to comment here just momentarily. I just want to, you know, hopefully, I think you were on for the last presentation from Taconic and Green, and you probably heard over and over this theme of all of our kids are all of our kids. And the concept of co-mingling the ballots was really central to, you know, accomplishing, you know, that objective. Nonetheless, the town clerks did identify just some logistical challenges. So there was an amendment made to make it easier for the town clerks, because there were some real issues. But the spirit is still very much there. So Carol, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Whoops.
You're good.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'll tell you, first of all, it's been fascinating to listen to this. I haven't attended a board meeting before, so listening for the last almost four hours has really been fascinating. Thank you for inviting me. I'm Carol Dohse. I'm the clerk and treasurer in Berry City, which is the host municipality for Spalding High School and for the Career Center. So I'm the place where all the ballots are going to be coming for co-mingling. We're disappointed that the board moved forward with co-mingling, but I understand it. The flip side of the coin is that I think that if you get individual municipal results, then you have an idea of where you haven't told your story well enough, where you need to put your efforts as far as getting good community buy-in. And I think that that's valuable information that you're losing by co-mingling ballots. But we'll move forward as it is. I have some hope. There is language in Title 16, Section 1575, that talks about the 10-day window following an election to certify an election. We're waiting for some legal opinion as to whether that 10 days actually allows us 10 days to co-mingle the ballots, so that we could actually, rather than having clerks travel an hour or more on a night after a 16-hour day, we could do them at a more reasonable time over the next week or so. So we're hoping that the legal opinion associated with that will support the idea of the co-mingling happening after town meeting day. So that's where we're putting our efforts at this stage of the game, is to get that ruling and hopefully in our favor. I really appreciate all the openness to the discussion by the planning committee and everybody else that I've been in touch with. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Carol. All right. So I think with that, maybe if, maybe another five minutes or so, I'd love to just hear, you know, sort of a, maybe some highlights. Jody, I'm guessing you might be the person just to talk a little bit about the good work that you are doing today in the Career Center.
We have a little video to share, too.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Yeah.
So all over teams, but we can give it a shot.
Okay. I'll try to share it, and then if it's not working, please just let me know, and we'll close it and do something else.
Great.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Central Vermont Career Center, or as we like to call it, CBCC. We're really excited to give you a tour of our facilities and our programs today. My name is Jerry Remore. I'm the STEM Coordinator, and with me is...
Chris Wheatley, one of the subs here.
We've got a lot to see today, so let's get started right away. Come on. When you first walk into CBCC, you're walking to the administrative offices. The first person you'll see is Sarah, our Administrative Assistant, who guaranteed under that mask has a smile on her face. Also down here is Jody Emerson, our Director, along with Cara Maxi, our Bookkeeper, and offices for Dr. Scott Griggs, our Assistant Director, and Lori Moore-Van, our Registrar. That's the administrative offices here. Now we're going to go see some of the programs, and that's the heart of the center. So come on, there's lots to see. The Electrical Technology Program is taught by Mr. Norris. Students in this program The Electrical Technology Program is taught by Mr. Norris. Students in this program learn residential and commercial wiring techniques, as well as appliance installation and alternative energy solutions. In the Baking and Culinary Arts Program, Chef Clark and Chef McSheffery have students daily whipping up a delicious dish or a great dessert. Cosmetology Program is taught by Ms. McRitchie and Ms. Courier. This is a two-year program where students progress from the first year to the second year and actually work in a salon. In the Plumbing and Heating Department, Mr. Long teaches students techniques in residential and commercial plumbing. Students who complete this program complete the first year of the apprenticeship program on their way to becoming licensed plumbers. The Automotive Department is taught by Mr. McKinstry. Students in here learn maintenance and light repair of vehicles and become ASE certified. In the Building Trades Program, the instructor, Dimitri Kolmatev, teaches students residential and commercial building techniques. Put these techniques to work from the basement to the roof. Medical Professions is taught by Dr. Jocelyn. In this program, students learn to jumpstart their career in the healthcare field. The Digital Media Arts Program is taught by Mr. Benjano. Students in DMA I learn techniques of software, editing, photography, graphic design. Now we can continue our education in Digital Media Arts and DMA II. Mr. Diaz will take everything you've learned and put it to work in production, including film work and television production. In the Exploratory Technology Program, instructors Mr. Hammond and Ms. Olson split time with students between the classroom and the shop. Students also visit and work in every program here at CBCC. This program allows students to make an informed choice about their future careers. In the Natural Resources and Sustainability Program, Ms. Garland teaches the students about the natural world around us, focusing on agriculture and the environmental sciences. In the Emergency Services Program, instructor Mr. Madison instructs students on how to handle emergency situations on their way to becoming certified as an emergency medical technician.
Excellent. And I, am I right in thinking that the students had something to do with the production?
They did. The Digital Media Arts II program created that.
That's awesome. That was a great, great video. And cool. So unless there are any other questions, I think we can move on to our formalities here. I'm trying to find my green sheet. So hopefully you've all reviewed the green sheet with the secretary's recommended action. So I'll, at this time, I would ask for a motion that the State Board of Education finds that the proposed formation of the Central Vermont Career Center School District is in the best interest of the students and the region and approve the report of the CVCCSD Planning Committee as the committee's final report pursuant to 16 VSA Section 1573.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Lovett. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Jepson. Is there any discussion on the motion? Already hearing none, we'll proceed to the vote. All those in favor of adopting the motion as stated, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand? Are there any abstentions? All righty, the motion appears to pass unanimously. The motion has carried unanimously, and you have adopted the motion. So congratulations on a job well done. And thank you very much for your presentation and all of your hard work that you do for your students.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Best wishes. Take care.
Thank you.
Oliver, I'm just noticing the reminder that they gave us around potential legislative changes regarding tech ed and/or the concern regarding the funding to support the standalone tech centers. And I don't know, I just pinned that so that we can think about whether or not we have a role in advocacy around that or otherwise.
Yes. And also hope, the other thing I want to make sure, Kim, it relates directly to you and your work on Chapter 11, the issues around co-mingling of ballots and some of the concerns that Carol raised. If, let's make sure that that is addressed. And I think Donna's already sort of on that anyway, but let's make sure we address that.
Thank you.
Right. So with that, we're a little bit behind schedule, but I do, I think we have an opportunity to catch up here on the next few items. So next up is Item N, which is our formal report to the Governor and the General Assembly. Hopefully, we can get through this item rather quickly. You'll see, I did prepare a draft, one-page report. I kept it short and sweet. For background information, it's pretty clearly laid out in the actual report. We have a statutory duty, which is really kind of a relic of an era bygone, where we would report annually to the Governor and to the, and to the legislature on matters, quite frankly, that are not within our jurisdiction. So one of the reporting requirements pertains to a whole slew of data-driven reports that were meant to provide, that the agency effectively does today. So again, this falls kind of under the auspices of the work that Tammy's committee is doing and kind of cleaning up roles and responsibilities. So in the report, the draft report, I should say, I highlight that, you know, this is really not appropriate for us to be reporting out. It's taken care of by the agency. So we hopefully fulfill that reporting requirement. And hopefully that will be our last annual report on that front. And then the other one was, we're required to report on our progress with respect to education policy. And again, I think this was an oversight in the Act 66 that passed earlier this year. The legislature explicitly removed our role from creating education policy. So by extension, the requirement that we report annually on that should also sunset. So that was the substance of my report. I did sort of briefly summarize the other things that we continue to work on, which is obviously of some importance. So with that, I would entertain a motion to formally approve the draft report that I've produced so that we can send that along to the Governor and the General Assembly. So moved. It's been moved by Mr. Jepson. Is there a second?
Seconded Patrick.
It's been seconded by Patrick. Is there any discussion? Kim?
Oliver, could we, if not summarizing the areas of work that we did do, if there's a concise bullet or two, but maybe importantly, including a link to the final rules around 173, a link to the tuition appeals and just list them. The, I think a link to the work we've done. And if there is a sentence or a bullet that summarizes that work, I think it would be beneficial to include a little bit more in those bodies of work.
I like the idea of a link, because we have the bullets there. So if we just included a link to, the tuition appeals were all grouped together. So there's a single decision we can, we can link back to. And the same, I think, and then for the rules, we can probably include some links to that.
Do we? I'm wondering with the upcoming work on Chapter 11, if it would be beneficial to, I'm not even sure if that shows up under those bullets or where are the lines, the consideration of the requests to withdraw. I don't see that those show up as a bullet, but that is within our domain and it's been a challenge. And I think highlighting that would be beneficial, even if it sneaks into two pages.
Yeah, I'm trying to keep it to one page. I think we can find a way to reference back because we did, we have submitted formal correspondence to the General Assembly on that point. So, but I think I can try to find, I'll try to find a way to reinsert that.
My worry is that the focus here is on that which we are not responsible for versus the work that we have done, which I think will remain a responsibility, as it is for any commissioner or board, to be reporting on the work we've done. And when I think about the lingering meetings and topics that have arisen around that, I think it'd be important for us to reference it and even include those documents and responses we've provided that are, even if they've been offered in pieces to like committee chairs or otherwise, I think this will be viewed by anybody who chooses to pick it up and read it. And I think it would be great to have all of that in one place.
Yep, I agree. So I will, I may have to drop the font size down a little bit to keep it on a page, but I, assuming everyone else is in agreement, I'll add a little bit on that and link back to the prior requests that we've put into the General Assembly, which I have to go dig up, but I know they're out there.
And maybe we can, maybe, I don't know if there's a way to tighten up by bullet, the pieces up top that we, you know, statutorily seem not to be required to do, providing a little bit more space for that which we are continuing to be required to do and should be highlighting about the work we're doing.
Okay.
Thanks.
Happy to do that. So I'll accept that, Kim, as a friendly amendment to just say that we'll adopt with the slight modifications that we've discussed. Okay. Any other comments? Otherwise, I will make those updates and send that out. And so with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting the motion as amended, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand? Any abstentions? The motion appears to carry. Motion has carried and you've adopted the motion as amended. So thank you for that. And with that, that brings us to Item O, which is to establish, and as I mentioned before, this is sort of consistent with the theme of trying to devolve some of the work out to smaller, more efficient committees. And I see this as really very analogous to what we did with the Rule 2200 Series Committee. It's almost an identical sort of thing that has transpired. So with the, as you recall, 173, the legislature created an advisory group to provide input to the board as far as its rulemaking process. And in addition to that, the board created a committee that was charged with responsibilities for picking up those recommendations and also considering other changes to Rule Series 2200. That committee was formed last December and has, as you know, has been sort of moving that rulemaking process forward. And we had a, you know, a similar process with the other special education rules. So what was before us now is in January, we're anticipating being in receipt of recommendations from the Act One Advisory Group, which is, we expect will make recommendations relative to the ed quality standards rules. That, their recommendations will be focused around themes around equity and inclusion and, you know, respect for diversity and diverse cultures and things within that realm. But the education quality standards are much broader than that. So we, we need, as a board, to start thinking about, first of all, being responsive to the recommendations that will be coming from the Act One Group, which we'll hear in January, but also looking at where we have opportunities for strengthening, improving, and adding on to other aspects of the ed quality standards rules. So what I've proposed here is that we establish a committee to really kind of lead that work. And I'd like that committee, hopefully, if we establish that committee today and appoint some members, can hopefully meet at least once before January to start thinking about how this work is going to be managed, once the process gets rolling come January. I also, back to some earlier comments, you know, I want us all to be really cognizant of, you know, I want to kind of go hearken back to Kim's earlier comments. You know, we, as a board, have been, I think, you know, we, it's fair to say, we've been somewhat insulated from a lot of what we're seeing play out in local communities. And it's sort of this national context that has, you know, landed in many of our communities. And I think it's fair to say that when we begin this important work in the new year, we're going to find that we're having to confront some of these issues. And I think this, it's going to be really important for the committee to acknowledge that and plan for that, and then think about how we're going to move this work forward in that environment. So with that, at this time, I would entertain a motion. And I'll recognize Jennifer Samuelson.
Thank you. I have two. So my first motion is I hereby move that the State Board of Education establish an Education Quality Standards Committee that will begin planning for the process to intake recommendations received from the Act One Advisory Group, consider other changes to the EQS rules, and to manage the rulemaking process through to completion.
Is there a second to that motion? It's been seconded by Ms. Gleason. Is there any discussion? All righty. With that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting the motion as stated, please signify by saying yes and raising your hand.
Yes.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand? Those opposed, please signify by saying no and raising your hand. Abstentions? The motion appears to have carried. The motion has carried unanimously. You've adopted the motion and established the committee. Jennifer, I'll now recognize you again.
Thank you. I further move that the State Board of Education authorize its chair to appoint members to the Education Quality Standards Committee.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Alrighty, all those in favor of adopting the motion, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 Those opposed, please raise your hand and say no. Abstentions? Already, the motion appears to have passed unanimously. The motion has passed unanimously. You've adopted the motion. So Patrick, did you, did you, we have moved on to voting, but did you have a comment?
And it's not, it's not very crucial, but I was going to suggest in the motion and edit of saying two, three or four members of the committees, just to be specific. But that might not be really important at this point because we didn't do it with the other one.
Correct. Yeah, I would suggest that we not be, because I want to have a little bit of flexibility and I'll explain during the moment. So yes, thank you for that.
All right, thank you.
So we have unanimously adopted the motion. So on that point, at, at this point, the, the chair appoints the following members to the committee, Dr. Colby, Mrs. Gleason and Mr. Brown. I have written to our two student members and I've, I don't want to put them on the spot now. And that's part of the reason I want to keep some flexibility with the, the numbers of, of folks on the committee. But I've, I've written to our two student members and invited them to think about, you know, the, the possibility of serving on this committee. I think it would be, I think it is essential. I'll say that, that we have student voice in this process. I'm also cognizant of the fact that this is going to be a significant undertaking, a significant body of work. And just as we have our day jobs, they have their day jobs as well. And most of us don't have our schedules dictated by bills and have a little bit more flexibility than they do. So I, I want to sort of acknowledge that and think about how we can welcome them into this committee process in a way that sort of is respectful of their academic commitments as well. So not looking to make any appointments now. I've, I've given both of our student members something to think about. And in the intervening period, we can, we can work on that. And I have the flexibility as the chair, based on the motion that we just passed, to appoint additional members. So Gabrielle or Angelita, I don't know if you have any just general thoughts. I'm not, again, I'm not looking to put you on the spot, but does that, does that make sense to you? Okay, I'm seeing nodding. Go ahead.
Yeah, it, um, it does. If we were to join a committee, what exactly would be expected of us? Would be, would we be expected to attend so many meetings and be there for so many hours? Just, just in terms of scheduling, I'm, I'm just wondering.
I, I think we can be, we can, that's where I think we can be flexible. So I wouldn't expect you to, you know, if your schedules wouldn't permit it, I would, let's put it this way, I would rather have you participate in some meetings than no meetings at all. So, and we can think about sort of, think about that. So give it some thought and, and we'll, we'll be in touch.
Okay. And the only thing I'll add, because Angelita had helped out with the 173 rules. I found that incredibly technical myself around the special education rules. And I, I want to offer that I think this body of work, which is the ed quality standards, and particularly a reframing through an equity lens, I've, for me, I feel better able to engage with that without the technical expertise. And so I offer that for students, I don't want to make assumptions about your interests, but I would bet it, you bring to it a lived experience that those of us haven't had recently. And your reflections on ed quality and the standards will be really important. And I would think probably more interesting to you than the technical aspects of the special education funding rules.
And, and there's one other. Yes. And one of the, I, I sort of moved on to our, the, the prospect of our student members, but one other member I'm also appointing is Mr. Tom Lovett as well. So. Excellent. So with that, we're nearing the end of our time. And I do want to spend some time on our agenda. So Secretary French, did you have any pressing updates you want to provide us an update on? Or are you happy with us to pass over your regular update?
Yeah, I, I have nothing really to add other. I assume you've paid attention to the press briefings and so forth on COVID, but I'd be happy to answer any questions on that. But no, I don't have any pressing matters. I will, I will just say, you know, the, I appreciate the board forming a subcommittee on the ed quality standards. I think it's important, I, not to, to Kim's point, I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of enjoyment to be found in education quality standards equal to perhaps special ed regulation. But I just want to be cognizant, this is, this is a major area of regulation and we have to be respectful of the agency's capacity to support this work. No doubt in my mind, you will be relying on our, our technical expertise to move that along. So I just, I hope you'll, and I know you will, participate in a understanding of how we situate this work in the broader portfolio of work that the, the agency has to lead.
Yeah. And on that point, thank you for that, Secretary. I, you know, I, I'm going to leave it to you to think about how you, you want the, the agency to be. Obviously, we want the agency, we need the agency to be involved in that process. And I'll, I'll leave it to you to think about how, how you want to staff that and what kind of representation you want to have on that committee. Alrighty, so let's, let's move on to the agenda and work plan. We have, you know, a fair amount of things already queued up for January. So as I mentioned before, we do anticipate and expect to have the, the Act One Group reporting out to us, which really kind of triggers this upcoming rule, rulemaking process. We also are expecting to hear from the folks in the Addison Central School District and Rippton. They have been having discussions. I, I watched, you know, a few of their recent meetings. So I do know that they are preparing to come before us in, in January. So as you know, I granted them a little bit of an extension and when it became obvious that they, they needed some more time. But I do want to hold their feet to the fire. Again, I think per our earlier conversation, it's really important to have some deadlines and some, some timelines or things just kind of have a habit of dragging on. So I do, at the very least, want a substantive update from them. And I will be writing to them and setting that expectation. You know, we have a, you know, expect to have a few other matters as well. Those are the two big ones that, that come to mind. We have had a request from some folks from the Stowe area. You may have been following under the heading of sort of school governance or school district dissolutions. There have been some recent votes to dissolve the district there. They are still within their 30 day window of reconsideration. So we should be mindful of that. We also, the, the circumstances there are, as all of the circumstances we've dealt with thus far are all very unique. And as, as you all are well aware now, chapter 11 is unfortunately woefully inadequate in, in many ways. So I've asked the agency to help provide us with some, some legal guidance on, on what the path forward is and what our role is in that process. And I've set the expectation as, as I think I copied you all on the note back to the folks from Stowe that January would be simply too early for us to, to take this up. We would need to take it up at the earliest in February. But I'd like to have at least a, a report back, a legal analysis. And that sort of sets the table for where we go and what our role is at, at the January meeting. So those, and then hopefully by then I will have heard back from the standards board and would like to kind of pick up the conversation we had at, at our last meeting around some of the workforce challenges that we're seeing and some of the opportunities that we have. Patrick, you know, looking for you to, you know, continue on with your, your regular, you know, theme of bringing in some voices from the field. And then Kim and I have been communicating, again, picking up on, you know, what we did with Taconic and Green today and hearing from school districts and kind of their post-merger stories and reflections. So that's, so as you can see, January is looking pretty full right now. And then as I, we discussed earlier, I will plan to schedule a special, convene a special meeting that's hopefully within the next month, sooner rather than later. Obviously cognizant of the holidays, but I do want to get a scheduled, special meeting scheduled for the explicit purpose of providing a forum for these students to tell us a little bit about their work and, and give, give them the, the recognition that they deserve. But also to have a broader conversation around, you know, sort of expectations of, you know, how our, you know, local governance, you know, can be and should be ensuring that our students are having, you know, an exceptional experience in, in, within the education system, an equitable experience. And that, you know, we are, you know, modeling sort of the, the behaviors of, you know, that we would expect of our students. So anyway, I'll, I'll get that scheduled. Lyle?
So to that end, will you be reaching out to the School Board Association to talk about any collaboration they would like to have with us?
Yes.
And not to poke the bear, but will we, we be responding in writing in any way at some point in the future to Rutland? And would you like me to just type up what I said and send it to you?
Great question. So let's have that as an agenda item at the special meeting. And if you could, in preparation for that, if you could draft something up and then we can take that up at that meeting.
Will do.
Kim?
Okay, thanks. I wonder if on that point, there is a specific example, but a general statement that is an affirmation of support of good governance on behalf of students or some, some version of that well-done statement that identifies the specific, it may one or two is specific examples, but really frames it from a slightly broader lens because I think the concepts are something we all, I heard universal support for. The other piece that I'm wondering, as we're doing stories from the field, if thinking about time and agenda, and I'm realizing we didn't list the updated information on the Rule 2200 and what comes out of that group. I wonder if telling stories from the field and alternating months with an equity focus and then a unification or merger focus helps the agenda. That, that's certainly yours to figure out, Oliver, and we can talk about what makes sense there because I think it's a very rich part of our meeting and ideally not rushed. But we are finding ourselves with a lot of work on our plates. I think that also needs sort of action, action type of response. And then finally, I think if we are going to do justice to the work, including the lens that we look at EQS, we probably have some learning we could benefit from ourselves as board members. And I wonder if we might look into some collective learning, whether in a retreat format. I know that we had talked about that possibly coming up and/or just concentrated time before, after a meeting for a couple hours. I think we began that with the, the implicit bias training last January, February. And I'd, I'd love for us to be able to revisit that. I think we have hard work to do and I think coming, learning together around that is going to be important.
I think that's, I think that's a great point and a great idea. Could I suggest perhaps that the committee on EQS sort of take that up and maybe bring back to me sort of a, a recommendation? And then we can take it from there and, and implement that. Patrick, I see your hand is up and then I want to go back and just see between Kim, what you, what you're going to be sort of leaning on. And then also Patrick, what you've been leaning on. I want to see if, if you guys both concur that we should alternate, if that makes sense. But maybe that's where you're going, Patrick.
Yes, thank you, Cheryl. I am just going to follow up with Kim, just exactly what I was thinking. Alternating, but also I'm going to propose inviting Susanna Davis in to do a presentation to the board at one of our future meetings. So Susanna is the, you all know Susanna in the governor's office, yes?
Okay, perfect.
I could take the lead in inviting her. I.
That, that would be wonderful.
Yes.
Okay. No, great suggestions. Any, any other thoughts? Can I, you, you mentioned something about something wasn't complete or done on the 2200. I just want to make sure we didn't miss something.
No, just the agenda, thinking about the, the depth of the agenda for January. And we hadn't mentioned it in this.
Yes.
Thing. But it would certainly come up as, as we're supposed to be looking at closer to a final draft in January.
Yes, exactly. Tammy?
And also for the agenda for January, the, the report out from the Rules and Responsibilities Committee.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, yes. Okay.
Like longer than four hours.
Well, I think we'll have to, and, and maybe, yeah, I think we may for January not, not invite in any other boards then and, and push that out till February. So, okay, no, thank you. Okay. Wonderful. Um, excellent. Any, anything else? Well, apologies for running a few minutes behind, but I think we had a really good meeting and accomplished what we needed to accomplish. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
It's been moved and by Kim Gleason, seconded by Jennifer Samuelson. All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying yes, raising your hand.
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Alrighty.
Happy holidays, yeah. Happy holiday, though.
Thank you. Cheers, bye bye.
See some of you soon. Bye.